Going to get started here. Good evening, I'd like to call to order the City Council Meeting of December 7th, 2020. And we will start with a prayer from Reverend Hank Rosso, please rise and join us.
Good evening. Please join me in prayer.
Our God in heaven, as we thank you for this great community you've given us, Lord, we thank you that it's not perfect, because if it was, we wouldn't be allowed here. We thank you for your grace and your goodness, we thank you for your mercy, and how you brought each one together with different beliefs, different viewpoints, and yet we all share the same heart, and that we love this community. So tonight during this meeting, we pray that that same like-mindedness, that same way you'd give us a like vision, God, we pray for understanding, compassion for each other, we pray for unity, and we thank you for those who called to serve us, whether it be those with the street department and keeping our roads safe. We think of tonight, the police and fire, law enforcement, each one, and the emergency services, the paramedics that look out for us and take care of us, we pray that you would look out for them, that you take care of them and their families, and that you bless them. And God, we thank you for each one here, we thank you for these council members, and those in our administration, because there are many great sacrifices of time and family and special events even, what they do just to serve us, so I thank you for each one. I pray a special blessing on them as well, and it's in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Pastor.
Thanks, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Albertson? Albertson?
Oh, here, sorry.
That's okay. Bueller?
Here.
Hoyer?
Here.
Hollein?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Rademski?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Here.
Wy?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the first item is the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion moved.
I have a motion by Vilhauer, and a second by Hollein. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristin.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Wy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item six is public comments, and this is the time reserved for anyone who would like to make a public comment, to come forward and do so, please state your name into the microphone for the record before making your comment. If your comment is related to an agenda item, please wait until that agenda item is taken up by the council. Is there anyone here who cares to speak?
Kyle Lalum, I just have a procedural question, I'm wondering, the City Council uses Robert's Rules of Orders for governing the council meetings, is that correct?
Yes.
And then was there a motion to reconsider made by members of the prevailing side from Resolution 20-15, that was defeated five to four at the previous council meeting?
The city attorneys are parliamentarian, and so I'll let him respond to that question.
Thank you.
Yes, there, Councilman Roby, I believe, made the motion to reconsider, it wasn't in that frame, but it was a motion to essentially adopt the defeated language with two amended pieces of language, and that prevailed nine to zero.
So that's why it's back again, the same resolution that was defeated five to four is on tonight's agenda?
The resolution that's on tonight's agenda has been on the agenda every meeting since the onset of the pandemic.
With the exception of the enforcement for the mask mandate resolution?
That was added, the resolution was amended, and that clause was added to the ongoing resolution at the last meeting.
Okay. Then I'll wait, thank you.
All right, we will be talking about the resolution in the regular agenda. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about a topic that's not on the agenda? All right then, we'll move on to approval of the agenda, and I'm going to move the resolution, which is item Q, up until after the very first item, we do have someone online waiting to talk about item A, so we'll put it right after item A. Is there a motion to approve as amended? I have a motion by Lalum, and a second by Wy. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristin.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein? Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Wy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Eight is the regular agenda, and item A is approval of Resolution 20-53 consenting to the proposed transfer of the cable franchise currently held by Clarity Telecom LLC. Is there a motion? Motion, Mayor Rademski?
Second.
Second by Vilhauer, and I will ask the city attorney, Matt Roby, to explain this item. Please, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Clarity Telecom, which operates with a DBA in Watertown, is vast, has recently notified us that there is another change of control occurring in their ownership structure. You'll recall that last year this occurred, and we approved, we consented to, I should say, the change of control, and so there's some other issues happening there again, and they're asking us to consent to another change of control. And this time around, as I was going through some older files, I noticed that Stanton Fox had engaged a firm out of Minneapolis, Moss and Barnett, to act as outside advisor on these transactions, to give us that outside perspective, the third-party legal perspective. And so Attorney Brian Grogan is on the line here with us this evening, and he is going to discuss what they've discovered in reviewing the transaction prior to your approval or lack thereof this evening.
Okay, thank you, so, Brian, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Do I, just so I know the procedure, do I unmute, do I unmute my camera as well?
You could.
I could, okay.
You may, do you have a camera mounted on your computer, Brian?
We can't hear you if you're talking, Brian. Shoot. I think he tried to undo the camera, and he took away the microphone.
I don't even know.
Can you get him on the phone, Matt?
Brian, are you there?
Just saw the mute button up here. Still can't hear you if you're talking. Okay, say something now.
I'm sorry, my apologies, Mayor, I tried to undo the camera, and it disconnected me from the whole meeting, so I apologize.
Here you are.
So I'm going to stay just doing this by voice. Thank you for the introduction, Matt. So the transaction that you have in front of you relates to Clarity Telecom, and as Matt said, they do businesses vast. What you have here is an entity that's up the chain of command in terms of ownership, so really the money is changing hands at the top of the corporate ownership ladder. A company that previously owned Clarity was called Python Holdings, and they're being replaced by a company called G.I., D.I., Rushmore, Topco LLC, and I dare you to say that 10 times fast without making a mistake. But the reason that we're talking about this at all is that when a company tries to change the control of ownership, it raises the issue of do they have the requisite qualifications to own and operate the cable system? The city has adopted a rather simple franchise back in 2016 that grants VAST the authority to use your streets to provide cable service, but you still have in place a fairly robust cable ordinance, and at Section 7.1408, there is a provision of that ordinance that says that you have to get City Council approval if you're going to change control of an underlying cable franchise. And so that's the authority that we're exercising tonight. You have in front of you a resolution that ultimately approves this transaction, subject to the company certainly reimbursing the costs that the city incurred for our outside review, and you also have in front of you a financial qualifications review, which tries to outline the various holdings of Clarity with this new ownership structure. In the end, what we, the good news is, Clarity's technical and legal qualifications largely remain unchanged, because the operating entity isn't changing here, it's just the money at the top of the ladder. The financial qualifications review hopefully sets forth some comfort for council members that this company does possess the necessary financial qualifications. As Matt had pointed out to me on a phone call, we phrased it with a little bit of a negative here, in that we don't have a reason that would justify the city denying this transfer. And you might question, well, why is that not stated in a more affirmative, positive manner? And it's simply because of the way in which the ordinance is drafted, and the fact that the criteria is, we would have to have a sufficient basis to deny the transaction, that simply doesn't exist under what the form that the company submitted. So Mayor, the issue before you tonight would be adoption of the resolution. I have reviewed it with Matt, made sure that it complied with your format and your, you know, the typical procedure that you adopt. To the extent the transaction is modified by the company prior to close, they would be required to come back and update that for the council, but otherwise, I'm happy to stand for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions? Councilman Vilhauer?
Just to clarify though, Brian, your review was really limited to the financial aspect of whatever the new company, or the new ownership is. I mean, it doesn't really say anything about, you know, the service capabilities or legalities of it, I mean, you're really limited to the financial aspect, if I understand, is that correct?
Yes, it's a really good question, and it can be confusing, there's three criteria that we're allowed as a city to look at, and it's legal, technical, financial. The legal isn't changing here, because Clarity Telecom is authorized by your Secretary of State to do business in the state and in the city, so we check that box. The technical qualifications, we don't dig in too much, because the same management team and same staff remains with Clarity Telecom, but to be honest, the folks that write their checks, those folks are changing. So that leaves us then with the key issue to consider is, does this new entity possess the requisite financial qualifications? And based on our review, we don't find any reason to deny based on that remaining qualification.
Okay, okay, thanks, Brian.
Bet.
Other questions or comments, council? See none, I'll look for action, all those in favor signify by saying aye, those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristin.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Wy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, thank you, Brian, is...
Very good, thank you, Mayor.
Item Q, review of the continued necessity of Resolution Number 20-15, declaring an emergency concerning the pandemic outbreak of the novel coronavirus, COVID-19, and providing for responsive measures related to the operations of the city and the protection of public health. And I think that, I'll just introduce this by saying, there's been a lot of conversation about this since our last council meeting, where the council unanimously approved a change in the language, and it stopped short of being a mask mandate, but it is a mask ask. And we're doing this, I think everyone agrees, masking will help us keep our businesses open, keep our schools open, keep our lives as much normal as we can, and we want to do this in a positive way that doesn't divide our community. But there have been some changes that have occurred in the last three weeks. Brookings and North Dakota's numbers were once similar, or they were worse than our numbers, but both have been experiencing a dramatic improvement since they passed mask mandates. And we have had some talk about the vaccines. Vaccines thankfully will start to be distributed here next week, but the numbers will be insignificant. We don't expect widespread vaccine distribution until probably late in March. The task force, the unified commanders for COVID, met today, and the medical providers agreed that the proposed resolution is not enough, what we've got going is better than nothing. They support making even incremental small changes as they're better than nothing, and they support it, but they still also would support a mask mandate. So, a couple of other things that we've had since November 16th, over 650 more people in Cottington County have tested positive for COVID-19. The Cottington County deaths in the last three weeks have almost doubled. We went from 30 deaths at our last council meeting, three weeks ago, to 57 today. And in our region, that our hospital and medical facilities support, it's nine counties, we went from 67 deaths three weeks ago to 150 today, so that's a pretty significant change. The White House Corona Task Force wrote in their November 22 report to South Dakota officials, "Given the extraordinarily high test positivity and incidence, among the highest in the world, aggressive measures to limit additional hospital overruns and preventable mortality are warranted and strongly recommended." Also recommended in that report, they said, "Ensure masks at all times in public, increase physical distancing through significant reduction in capacity in public and private indoor spaces, and ensure every American understands the clear risks of any family or friend interactions outside of their immediate household indoors without masks." Also, Saturday, our Walmart closed due to impacts from COVID, and they spoke with me before closing, they said this was not a routine practice that they're doing everywhere, they've only done it in a handful of places. The number of cases of COVID in our community warranted this, and so they did close temporarily. So I think there's some changes that will warrant making even incremental steps forward. And I had asked some professional writers in our community to draft a resolution that they felt would be palatable by people on both sides of this issue, people who do not want a mask mandate and people who do. And so they did a proposal, I shared it with the unified commanders on the COVID Task Force earlier today, and they made some recommended changes. I'm going to read the revised resolution that has been proposed by the writers and the COVID Task Force. "Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council hereby resolve, all people in Watertown shall wear a mask when within six feet of someone with whom they do not reside. This obligation shall not apply while eating or drinking. In those instances, the non-masked person shall maintain a six-feet distance from any person other than one with whom they reside. All businesses and public gathering areas are expected to prominently display signs encouraging the use of masks. This measure will take effect immediately upon passage and will automatically expire on March 31, 2021 unless extended." And so with that, I would like to entertain a motion if anyone of the council members would like to make one, and then we will have some conversation about this.
So moved.
Councilman Hoyer, motion? Is there a second?
Second. Bueller?
Councilman Bueller, okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Hoyer, and a second by Councilman Bueller, and I'm assuming to adopt the resolution as I read it? Is that correct?
Yes.
Michael, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and second, and now, I know there are some people that are here that would like to speak presumably about this issue, if there's anyone here that would like to speak about this, will you please come forward and state your name in the microphone? Sure.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me some time tonight. I'm Dr. Tina Melanson, I'm the nephrologist at Prairie Lakes, I'm a kidney doctor. I was born and raised in Watertown, I graduated from Watertown High School and the University of South Dakota School of Medicine. I've spent my entire professional career practicing medicine in South Dakota. I've been incredibly blessed to have the opportunity to move to Watertown in 2011, it was one of the best decisions that I ever made in my medical career. I'm here to provide a medical perspective regarding a citywide mask mandate. I will not spend my time regurgitating statistics and facts regarding mask efficacy, other than to just acknowledge that masks do help, and wearing masks represents a positive change, of course. I also do not claim to represent 100% of doctors in the community, but I do know that my beliefs align with the overwhelming majority of doctors and other healthcare professionals, including nurse practitioners, physician assistants, and the nursing staff. To be blunt, we are at war with an invisible enemy. With the limited weapons we have now, that war is proving to be impossible. Besides encouraging social distancing, our current war plan is to advise masking in public. We've been expecting friends and neighbors to be considerate of the risks and make the decision they felt was right for them. Since fully reopening the community months ago, the plan has been to keep businesses open while allowing our neighbors the freedom to make whatever decision about masking they thought was best. Is this plan working to keep us open and keep us all safe? Absolutely not. Under these efforts, the number of infections in our community is rapidly increasing. According to the South Dakota Department of Health, in the last three months, infection rates have increased almost 10 times from the eight months prior. Deaths, especially amongst our elderly, have increased dramatically. Hospitalizations for sick patients have at times pushed the inpatient census right to the edge. So far, we have been fortunate, but the numbers that we're seeing now by no means suggest that we will be able to stay in the clear. Of the larger counties in the state, Cottington County is reporting the highest rates of infection and hospitalization, and for patients who need hospitalization, the financial burden can be overwhelming. Last week, a local radio station reported that as COVID hospitalizations grow, so do the medical bills. At the same time, many of these families are already struggling financially. Nursing home residency rates are plummeting due to COVID deaths jeopardizing their future viability. Outside of nursing homes, the death rates among the elderly population that would normally transition into empty beds is only going to compound the problem. Some nursing homes in neighboring communities have been forced to close due to financial strains, and some facilities are actually requiring care providers to work while they are actively infected due to staff shortages. Our area nursing homes have not been spared. Please imagine if our local long-term care facilities are forced to close their doors due to a lack of staffing or unsurmountable financial losses, we may be forced to start placing our loved ones in facilities far away from our community. While patient loads surge and unprecedented number of healthcare providers are unable to help with patient care when they themselves are sick, again, so far we have been fortunate, but this could result in an unsustainable workload for a finite number of healthcare workers with an increasing census of critically ill patients. workers with an increasing census of critically ill patients. Despite the current masking advocated but not required plan, we have seen local businesses forced with the decision to close their door. This weekend, Walmart, remember, they have a pharmacy that provides medications critical for patients as well as medical supplies. Several local eating establishments have also closed for days at a time due to high volume of infected employees, and some businesses have chosen to limit hours of opening because of infected staff and not enough healthy patrons to keep the maintained business as usual operations. Quote, "The next three months are going to be the most difficult in the public health history of this nation," says the CDC yesterday, Dr. Deborah Birx. "This is the worst event that this country will face, not just from a public health standpoint." The White House Corona Task Force singled out South Dakota. I won't repeat that. What we are doing now is just not working. We can no longer ignore these warnings. We need to accept the facts. We need an aggressive change of strategy, and we must pull together as the great community that we are, and we must do better. From the medical services standpoint, the current path we are on is unsustainable. The South Dakota State Medical Association, with the overwhelming support of physicians, has recommended a mask mandate, and in Watertown, most of the medical community agrees. We are advocating for a mask mandate in public settings in addition to social distancing and frequent handwashing. A mask mandate must be enforced, or it will not change anyone's practices. Do not misunderstand, your local health providers are not advocating stay-at-home. A mask mandate will keep our businesses and schools open. We want our kids and teachers at school and employees of our businesses at work and safe. I understand the caution that you may feel about an enforced mask mandate. What I do not understand is why, in this great community, the idea of wearing a mask is absolutely disdainful. A global pandemic is not a me or I moment. It is a we and us opportunity, but community requires cooperation. Science has shown that masks help. Just 50 miles away, mayor mentioned Brookings County was the first in the state to pass an enforced mask mandate. Three months in, the decreasing number of infections have proven that masks work. When university students are on campus, the Brookings population is around 39,000. On Friday last week, they reported 20 deaths and a COVID positivity rate of 9.3, when we had been equal. Compared to Cottington County, our population around 28,000, Friday, we reported 57 deaths, more than double, and a positivity rate of 25% in the county. Prairie Lakes last week had a positivity rate of 39%, three times the Brookings rate. We know that lowering infection rates translates directly into decreasing death rates and less pressure on our hospital and healthcare resources. As of last week, Brookings has one of the lowest COVID positive cases in the state. COVID-19 does not discriminate who it infects, and therefore, we should all wear masks. We are all tired. I do empathize. But a simple gesture of wearing a mask will shorten the time that we have to continue under these constraints. The sooner we pull together, the sooner we'll be through this. Please help unite our community and provide the leadership needed to protect small businesses, essential workers, healthcare providers, teachers, families, friends, and neighbors. We know some people will never wear a mask. Many of those people point out their rights and freedoms to make their own decision when it comes to their body. Some may recall that in the mid-1980s, the state voted to pass a law that removed the choice deciding whether to wear a seatbelt. It was not popular, but we got used to it, and it saved lives. Younger generations, for the most part, don't even know this was an argument. In 2011, a law was passed that confirmed there's no right to smoke in public places. It was passed to improve public safety and to decrease adverse effect of one person's choice on another person's health. Few would claim now that we should go back to allowing people to endanger other lives with secondhand smoke. Unlike the laws passed to address highway safety or dangers of secondhand smoke, the medical community is simply asking for temporary masking requirement. We're asking for a time-restricted mandate, reevaluated at regular intervals to consider how quickly and efficiently the COVID vaccine rolls out. I recommend local medical experts who are willing to speak on the record be included in discussions of lifting restrictions. But only an enforced masking mandate is going to get the job done. I do not pretend to know the details of how that could be accomplished, but my hope would be a direct mandate from the city council will help us in the healthcare setting more easily enforce our own mandates. I acknowledge enforcing masking is going to be difficult. Some people are going to be angry, and in my experience, those people are actually very, very angry. Many of us healthcare providers have been directly targeted with rage, threats, and horrible vitriol when confronted with masking in the hospital, in the dialysis unit, and in the clinics. If the community is tired, consider the effect on the frontline providers. They apply layers and layers of PPE every single day, and they wear it for hours at a time. They are also tired. They're short of breath, hot, thirsty, sweaty, and frankly, they've been prevented the ability to lay bare hands and compassion on very ill patients. Honestly, it's very difficult for some of us to understand that we take on all these extraneous measures to keep everyone else safe, while we see some people seemingly who do not care enough about our own sacrifices to keep our healthcare providers safe. Remember, this virus is disproportionately killing our elderly population. Watertown's elderly include former city leaders, family business owners, retired teachers, doctors, and public servants, you name it. We should never send the message that we are willing to casually accept the losses of our elderly. Many of these people built this community. Watertown has a duty to protect those who came before us and made Watertown what it is today. We cannot pretend it is acceptable to risk our parents' and our grandparents' lives. Like so many, I routinely have direct interactions with COVID-infected patients. For months, we have been layering PPE and deliberately exposing ourselves to COVID-positive patients to deliver compassionate healthcare. Now I and others like me need your help. Please, think of us. Please have the courage to join forces with our local healthcare workers in facing this enemy head-on. Please adopt an enforced mask mandate to help us get through the heated battle we are waging. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Melanson. Dr. Melanson would support a mask mandate. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against that?
Kyle Lalum back again. Thank you very much, Dr. Melanson, and for all that you do and all of your staff does. I'm certainly empathetic and appreciate all that you do for our community. And same to you, Mayor, and council members. I don't envy any one of you in what you are, this unbelievable and difficult and unwinnable situation that we're in. But just a couple of things to bring up. And, you know, I sent an email to the council members earlier today where I referenced the mask mandates that went into effect in California and Minnesota on their two respective dates. I think California was June 18 of 2020, and Minnesota, I think in the email, I put it was July 25, or 22, but it was actually the 25. And if you look at their curve in infection rates on the information that I sent, and I did bring it here too, if you want to put it up on the screen for public record, you're welcome to do that, because I also printed out the same information for South Dakota. So, you've got the Minnesota numbers right here, and this was as of mask mandated on July 22. Again, I believe that was July 25, but you can see the upward trend there going forward to today. As of today, their numbers are at 350,000 plus. I also put in there the positive numbers for California. California implemented their mask mandate at 618 of 2020, and their number was referenced at 165,416 positive cases. And then fast forward to today, even with that mask mandate in place, you've got confirmed COVID positive cases at 1.286 million. And then we've got South Dakota's numbers. And South Dakota's numbers, if you'll see here on, again, July 22, we had 8,077 positive cases. And then you fast forward, I think the information was through the fourth, and that was at 79,535. So, based on this information, and contrary to, the masks don't necessarily work. On December 2, the CDC and World Health Organization came out and changed some of their rules again, changing the quarantine time from 14 days to just seven days in some cases. They also said that the face shields do not work, and they also recommended that the, or said that the masks with, shouldn't have a mask with a ventilator because the droplets can pass through those, not the N95 mask, but just the regular mask with ventilators. So, I mean, this mask mandate is the first step, and I hear incremental changes and incremental enforcement. I mean, Minnesota went from a mask mandate, and then all of a sudden, they shut businesses and doors down. And if any of you have traveled to Minnesota, you know that there's a lot of things that you can't do, and those individuals are making their way to South Dakota for entertainment and retail. One of the conversations that I had with an individual that was at my dining establishment three weeks ago from Minnesota, he said that it felt oddly normal to sit in a restaurant and watch people eating, drinking, laughing, and having a great time without masks. Oddly normal. Think about that for a second. They're leaving their state to come to South Dakota and have dinner, because that's oddly normal, because they don't have the opportunity to do that. And I'm not trying to diminish or devalue or put a price on the loss of life, because you can't quantify that. And I'm extremely sympathetic to those individuals and families that have lost their loved ones. And obviously, I have parents and grandparents that are still alive, and they've taken precautionary measures themselves to protect themselves. But the last time we had this mask mandate conversation three weeks ago, my business at the restaurant that I run dropped 50%, 50%. And this is not a me or we thing. This is about the employees that I hired that are trying to make ends meet to pay their family and come up against their financial burdens, because their income isn't based on the hourly wage that they receive. Their income is based on the gratuities that they receive based off the sales that they make. So you talk about incremental changes. I mean, we put a mask mandate in place, so if our numbers continue to go up like they have in California and Minnesota that I just referenced on the slides, and the mask mandate doesn't work, what's the next step? Do we enforce what kind of mask they have to wear? Do we enforce what kind of businesses they can go into, or what businesses could or should be open or should be closed, like they have in other states and some of our surrounding states? You know, it's difficult to come and try and, I'm not trying to fly in the face of the medical field or anything like that. I'm here to strictly say that the hospitality industry is taking a huge hit in a time of the year when they're supposed to make the majority of their money. Christmas parties have canceled. That's the individual businesses' right and opportunity to do that, because they didn't feel comfortable doing that. That's their decision to make. My job is to enforce the rules that we have. My rule is, is that if you don't wear a mask, you're still welcome to come here. If you wear a mask, you're welcome to come as well. If you need accommodations made, you want to come in the back door of my restaurant, and you want to be set in an area where there's nobody else, we're happy to accommodate that as well. We've had individuals call and say, "I won't come to your restaurant because you don't have a mask mandate policy." I support your decision. I hope that you'll support ours. I've also had individuals that have said, "We're happy to come there because you don't have a mask mandate." My employees all on the interview process. Obviously, we opened during the pandemic. It started on the Friday, the 13th in March, the day before or after St. Patrick's Day. And they're saying, "14 days. We need 14 days to flatten the curve." Well, here we are, nine months forward, and we're still asking for 14 days. Now we're asking for 30 days. Now we're asking for another 90 days. And I understand that it takes time to develop the vaccine or antibodies or whatever it is, but there's always this ebb and flow. I think that it would be appropriate to follow through with the public health campaign that you have done, encouraging people to wear masks. But the mandate piece of it is extremely difficult in my business, in the restaurant business. On the flip side, my other business, my real estate business, 30% of my transactions that I've done this year have been from people fleeing states to move to South Dakota to get away from overbearing governance. 30%, I've done 39 transactions this year. 13 of them have been from people coming to South Dakota because of our policies that we have. I think that it's important to allow businesses to function and operate as they see fit, because we are not a one-size-fits-all kind of community. You know, I mean, you, do you want to, is this the first step? Is this the first step, like Minnesota did? I'm not talking about, I mean, the financial burden is real for my employees. I need more hours. I need more hours. I don't have hours to give, because we give our hours based on the business that we have. If you talk to other people in the restaurant business, and I am not here to speak on their behalf, but I would implore you to contact them and find out what their numbers and how their numbers have been affected. Because without holiday parties and things like, and people just going out for regular meals, they can't sustain. On the flip side, you look at the retail sales, look at the percentage of increase that our sales tax dollars have generated in Watertown. I think we're 2.6% higher than where we were. Ask yourself why that is. Is it because we've seen a large influx of consumers coming from across the border, because they can buy goods and services in Watertown that they can't get in their locals? I know that the CVB and Chamber and the city have done ZIP code allocations, and to find out where their consumers are coming from, they've done it for years. That's how we do our marketing campaign. That's how we figure out how to do our shoulder season campaigns. Have we investigated that to see where they're at? Because two of the retailers that I've talked to said that their sales numbers are higher than they've ever been, and that what they anticipated because of out-of-state consumers coming here, because they have the freedom and the flexibility to buy what they need and what they want. So while difficult as it is to come before you and fly in the face of what our medical community is requesting, my recommendation or my request is just to think about the line-level employees that we have. Most of them living paycheck to paycheck or night to night in the hospitality industry, because they are single parents or, you know, new parents, new families, things like that. They have financial burdens that can be unsustainable for them to pay their bills and the challenges that we face by not being able to see and visit our family and friends. That's a decision that each and every one of us have to make for ourselves, including my parents and my grandparents. So with that, I do not envy the position that you're in, but I think that the words incremental changes just open the door for more and more, if we see trends like California and Minnesota that don't flatten it. So with that, I appreciate your time. I thank you for allowing me to speak, Madam Mayor, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lalum. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of controls? Ah, yes. Tyler, can you help her with the?
Good evening. My name is Julie Knutson. I'm the Executive Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I just want to thank you for having me tonight. What I'm going to go over, I guess, are just some visitor industry recommendations. And as Kyle said, by no means do I want this to be interpreted that I am thinking about lost business. I do have a great deal of compassion for all of those that are suffering and the people that are having difficulties in whatever circumstance they have going on right now with the pandemic. It's heartbreaking. But I did want to bring some additional information and just a little bit different perspective that might help in deciding exactly what to do here. And again, Kyle alluded to, I don't envy any of you. I think this is one of those things when you sign up to be on the city council or you run for mayor, the last thing you think is that you're going to be dealing with something like this. And so I just want you all to know that I'm here to help in any way I can, and hopefully, this will shed a little bit of light on what the visitor industry has been dealing with in the last eight or nine months. So, the positive part of everything is we are now looking towards recovery. And for those that don't know, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is a marketing conduit for the city of Watertown outside of our area, our region nationally and internationally. I've been in my role for five years, and we have marketing out in a great deal of the United States. We did our first European market last year, and things have been very We did our first European market last year, and things have been very positive in the visitor industry up until March of this year. So we're just going to try to... Just a quick snapshot of how do we get to recovery from here? So here's a little bit of background. I didn't want to go into too much detail, but in 2019, and I just... The data I have that I'm working with right now is from March through August. March is really when our numbers became an issue. So 2019, August, or March through August, the short line is the hotel tax. The taller line is the third penny sales tax or the BBB. Then we go 2019 to 2020. We have the BBB in the blue line and the hotel tax in the green line, again, March through August. And you'll see that the BBB actually kind of came back in July and August, a little bit of dip in June. And I think we did have a very robust visitor industry, and we had a lot of people that were kind of stuck here, too. So our locals were eating out and doing things, and the weather was great, and we were out having a little bit of fun. And I know as far as the sales tax, people were building and remodeling and buying boats and campers and all of that stuff. So what I'm going to show here tonight is the difference between... We see the sales tax numbers, and we think that things are looking really good, but really, it's dramatically shifted into where those sales tax numbers are coming from. So in 2019, just a little background, our annual hotel inventory in Watertown yearly is 259,150 rooms. Roughly 22,000 rooms per month are available to be rented. So in 2019, we had 143,000 room nights sold, March through August, and you'll see the numbers there. And then in 2020, you'll see March, April, May, and June where that all took a dip. Now, we did have a lot of transient business, and I actually have some numbers that show exactly where the... I have one hotel that was very specific about keeping records, and so without naming them, I have some numbers that will be just shocking, I'm sure. But in July and August, we actually had an increase in hotel occupancy. So we're... I was on a phone call a week ago with someone from all 50 states with the U.S. Travel Association, and really, we're, according to the numbers, we're in pretty good shape as a whole. One thing we did is applied for some CARES Act money. What I recently did was took $25,000 and spent it to support the Watertown's air travel. The two industries that were hurt the most within the pandemic were air travel and meetings and conventions. So this will just explain a little bit about trying to maybe get some of our messaging out there in those two markets. So the most popular ad on our social media site was, we had a real robust campaign that I just had an update with Arcstar, who works with the Watertown Regional Airport as well. The Watertown Fireworks Show at the Redland Arts Center was a number-one ad. The number-two ad was United Airlines' safety video. And there's not a drier piece of material out there. But people are... That are traveling are very, very concerned about safety. And I don't know if anybody has had any kind of a conversation, but the lengths that United Airlines is going through in the airline industry and the hotel industry, all of those industries, because we've lost $8.4 billion in travel this year as a nation. And so those two industries had to get their act together in a hurry. The mitigation efforts are huge, and they're doing something right, and there are no infections that are tied to air travel because of the masks, because of the sanitizing and all of the different measures that they're taking. So in two and a half weeks, over 800 individuals went to the visitwatertownsd.com/covid page. I can't even imagine in a normal year that that would... It just kind of blew my mind, to be honest. That's a lot of people going to that site, having anything to do. So these are people considering travel, but they want to know what kind of safety measures that we are conducting and what our mitigation efforts are locally. Here's the astounding information. Meetings mean business. 80% of meetings and convention business is booked anywhere from two to five years in advance of the actual event. So in March through September, we had the number of groups that canceled are listed there, a total of 95, 3,729 room nights, another 1,991 overflow nights, for a total of $932,848 in lost meeting and convention business in seven months. Now, in the middle there, between March 16th and 19th, the meeting revenue lost was lost at a rate of $2,000 an hour over a four-day, 24-hour period each day. We have lost a ton of money. We had a record year in 2020 planned, which doesn't matter with everything that's going on. The economic impact of that loss, and yes, we did have people coming at the last minute from Minnesota and from Iowa and all over the country to see Watertown, but those were trips that were planned very sporadically. They weren't trips that were planned in advance. All the trips that were planned in advance and the group business that was planned in advance, the loss was totaled at $2.5 million in economic impact to our city. That is just the meeting and convention business. That's not the other hotels. It's not the loss of the restaurants and the hospitality business. It's not any of that stuff. That is just the meeting and convention rooms and catering. That's it. And then the $2.5 million would be any additional money that would be spent. And the U.S. Travel Association tells us that for every dollar spent, $1.62 or $2.62 additional is spent. I have a press release here. If you would just allow me just a second to point this out. Roger Dow, who is the President and CEO for U.S. Travel Association, urges travelers to apply health and safety guidelines. This just came out on November 19th. Apply safety guidelines in every phase of travel. First and foremost, wear a mask in public spaces. In order for us to get back to recovery or to a place where we can count on bringing in visitors and revenue, we have to be consistent with these mitigation efforts. It says, "The same best practices apply in every phase of travel," said Dow. "If you're in the airport, at a rest stop, entering a restaurant, or staying in a hotel, please wear a mask in public spaces without exception." I don't think anybody anywhere is really requiring people to wear face masks when they're dining or things like that, and I think that's a pretty regular thing. And I think that's important to point out in our industry as well because that is a big part of the travel industry. Dining is just really a unique, different type of experience, and it would be impossible to require face masks in a situation where there's dining involved. So as far as recovery, and again, the things that everyone is going through, you know, to me, the money is... It'll come when it comes, and travel will come back. But what we need to do is start working on getting those meetings and conventions back into Watertown. And remember, it's two to seven years in advance that you book. So we've already lost a year of booking. And I know that that tax revenue also pays for potholes, the first and second penny. It, you know, pays for a lot of things that the citizens use. And so it's just another part of this whole puzzle. And I think that collectively, the tourism industry has had to come together because they took such a big hit, and they had to get it right. And so it's really hard for me as an organization. I've changed our messaging four times now because at first, it was, "When you're ready to travel." Then it was, "Watertown is prioritizing safe travel." Then we had a spike. No one is wearing masks. I had a hard time selling it, and we were taking a beating on our social media and everything else because, you know, Forbes is out there. We're number one on the Forbes list this week as the worst place to travel to. It makes it really hard for us to do our job. So I think that just for everybody to band together, work together, I think it's going to keep our businesses open, it's going to keep our schools open, and it's going to keep our beds open. And I think really, right now, we can't expect a whole lot more than that. That would be good, to have those things going that way. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I just killed your...
Yes.
Could I do something?
Okay. Would you please state your name? Do we have an online speaker? If so, please state your name.
Yes, good evening. My name is Tom Lennox.
Tom Lennox? Okay.
Lennox, L-E-N-X.
Can you turn that up at all? Hey, go ahead, Mr. Lennox.
I'm here tonight in regard to the proposed mask mandate that Mayor Karen is going to be pushing for tonight at the city council meetings. It's too late. The cat is already out of the bag. Whether or not you are willing to admit it or not, the reason that we are seeing more cases is simple. We have more testing. Since the beginning of this year, when it was announced that the coronavirus was present in the United States and that it had potential to become a pandemic, the people of this have been told by the CDC and the Surgeon General not to wear masks. And then again, we were told by the same people to wear masks. What are we really supposed to do at this point? When this pandemic started, we were told we needed to shut down for two weeks, and that would stem this disease and make it manageable for our healthcare system and businesses. Yet, we still have people across this country dying from the disease. We shut down our businesses. We shut down our schools. The American way of life was shut down. We did it here in Watertown, and yet, we are still seeing people die. At the same time, people were put out of work, wages were lost, small businesses have shut down completely, and a large part of the school year was lost. Let me ask you this. If masks are so effective, why are we seeing people in nursing homes dying from COVID-19? These facilities have been under lockdowns, eliminating people from seeing loved ones, have required residents to wear masks, and increased the level of personal protective equipment their staff wear. But yet again, we have people working in these settings, testing positive for the virus. If we are truly worried about the safety of our healthcare system, why are elective surgeries still being done? I can tell you without reservation, a mask mandate won't work because people don't live in bubbles. They don't have the proper protective equipment, and they lack self-discipline in dealing with this disease. There have been countless talking heads making claims to the effectiveness of masks and an equal number of pundits refuting the subject. I understand vaccines are coming soon. Will the mask mandate end then? None of the vaccines have a 100% efficacy rate. The disease will still be here. People will still die. And let's not get started on how safe the vaccines are or aren't. The last point I want to address is how will this mandate be enforced? If there's any punishment tied to not wearing a mask, how are you going to classify it? If there isn't any punishment and no enforcement, why are you wasting our time and money on this subject? I ask, when did government become the cure-all for everything? What happened to personal responsibility? Government mandates under the guise of protections, protecting society and removing personal freedom? I truly believe the only reason why some of you are considering voting for a mask mandate is purely based on political expediency. You have been browbeat by the mayor on this issue since the beginning. It needs to stop, and you need to step up for what is right for the Watertown community and vote against this mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak about this issue? All right, counsel? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion that you'd like to have? Councilman Hoyer?
There we go. I guess just after hearing all the public input, I guess, I kind of have some things just to reflect on a little bit here and, I guess, to say a little bit with this. Just to quote something real quick, just because I was doing a lot of research today, especially just being messaged by a ton of people. A lot of people care very deeply about this, of course. But ended up reading a lot of evidence, both sides, you know? And there is parts where the scientific community is split on it. But I guess here's a quote that I liked out of all of it that I found in some of the articles. "But first, the greatest obstacle to discovering the shape of the Earth, the continents, and the oceans was not ignorance, but the illusion of knowledge." And that comes from Daniel Burston, a former librarian to Congress. I like that quote because it illustrates something that I don't know if it's a societal thing with us nowadays or what, but we have this interesting perspective that we know better than experts or, for whatever reason, we just, I guess, like that, like I said, that we know better. And that's hard because, you know, I don't go to my plumber to do brain surgery on me. I don't call my electrician to, you know, weld panels on my car. But for some reason, we seem to feel like we know better than doctors that are experts in their fields. Now, granted, and this is no offense to any doctor that specializes in a field outside of like the study of viruses or pathology and all that, but they're looking at those things, too. And honestly, they're still more qualified than I will ever be in the medical field. And they really are the people on the front line. And I guess what's interesting to me is that throughout this week, I've heard the line, "I don't envy any one of you." And no offense to those that said it. I agree. I wouldn't envy somebody in this position, I suppose, but realistically, we're expected to be leaders. Okay? Leaders make hard decisions. That's part of the job. We're supposed to weigh these things out. So I guess sympathies and empathies are wonderful, but that's part of being a leader. You don't sign up or run for this position if you don't expect to face things. And yes, these are a little more extreme circumstances, but that's still part of the So I can't help but feel morally conflicted on how we're approaching the resolution. I mean, realistically, guys, looking at what we're trying to pass here even now, I mean, this doesn't read that much differently than what was on the table last week. We're essentially doing the same thing. The doctor's already saying, "This isn't enough." And I guess that leaves me feeling a little morally void in this. I think it's interesting when we say that we have people attacking those without masks. To be honest with you, working in the service industry, I've been attacked more for wearing a mask in South Dakota. I've gotten made fun of more for that. I've been, you know, just badgered about it. When I didn't have one on early in the pandemic or, you know, parts of the summer, nobody ever said anything. And in the community, nobody ever said anything. But the minute I put one on, then I started getting flak for it. I think that's more representative of some parts of South Dakota than the opposite. But I don't know. There's a little bit of irony in all of it just because when you look at the research, the majority of the anti-mask data that people quote, it just simply says that masks don't work. The thing that they often cite about people wearing masks is that they're wearing them improperly. It gives them a false sense of security. They aren't highly effective. They're still effective, but they're not highly effective like an N95 would be, which is true. But there's still a level of protection that's there, and I would hope by now... I mean, guys, we're 10 months into this thing. We understand that even if you wear a mask, you're still supposed to socially distance. You're still supposed to wash your hands. You're still supposed to do all those things. And I don't think we're kidding ourselves. I mean, many of us will still catch this disease. It's hard to stop a virus. That's what makes this so challenging. It's an aerosol. I mean, it's a tiny, tiny particle, and nothing's ever going to be 100% perfect at stopping it. But we can do measures that potentially can do better than nothing. And I guess that's kind of been the struggle here, too, is that a lot of the things that we've been addressing are, "This doesn't do a lot, so let's not do it." Just because I don't see how this infringes on a personal freedom. I love the seatbelt argument because it's your personal freedom to put on your seatbelt or not put on a seatbelt. But, you know, we still ended up passing legislation that said, "Put on your seatbelt," and there's a fine behind that. We tell people, you know, I'm one of the... I am the youngest member on the council. I remember going to restaurants and people smoking them. There's a reason we quit doing that, too. There's a reason we quit doing that too. I'm not looking for us to ever go to a closure, I pray we never go back to that. I don't think it ever really helped us that much, but that was just because of the way we went about it, but it's just, to me, the mask mandate helps prevent closures, it helps get a heightened sense of we need to be doing our part, we need to be washing our hands, we need to be spacing out from people. I know folks still went and did Thanksgiving. Some of us did smaller ones, some of us didn't do them. And that's, you know, that was your personal choice. We're not looking at requiring you to wear a mask forever, nobody wants to do that. I don't think any of us want to see that kind of push, that's just kind of silly. And we're on the brink of just now getting a vaccination that has really good results so far, but we haven't seen them flush out, and it's going to be a while before we see full group immunity with that. And even then, there's going to be more to be seen with it, but us just doing our little part, I really don't understand what's so hard about the mask or what's so crushing about it. I mean, if you don't want to wear a mask, cool, stay home if you don't want to wear it, that's fine. Or like, if you're out hiking in the middle of the woods, I don't think anyone's going to come talk to you. A lot of these are just done municipally, they're within the city, they're not done in the country, so if you want to go do that, you still can. You're going to be distanced from people out there even better, so that's fantastic, go hunting. But when we're in a community, I just feel like it's our personal responsibility to ask people to just do their part, and the reason we're getting to the point we are now is because people aren't. We keep saying that we can do this with personal responsibility, but I'm sorry, we're kind of proving that we can't because we haven't been, and I still see people that don't. And you know, right now, we say that's a freedom, again, you can't smoke a cigarette in a restaurant either, that used to be a freedom, but you can do that now. I don't see how this is really that different, you're puffing out a virus at people potentially. And you've all read evidence both ways, okay? These are our local doctors asking for it, I brought it up last time, these are our doctors here asking for it, they're on the front line, they're asking for help. I don't see how we can sit here and just ignore them, and when we say, you know, I still support the healthcare system, sure, I guess maybe you do, but when we're not doing what they're asking, I don't see how that's supporting them. That seems a lot like thinking we know better than them, and we're going to do something else. And I still don't understand how masks are political, but somehow people have made them that way. But with all that said, I apologize that it's so lengthy. I would push for this because I feel it prevents closures, so I'd like to amend my motion and have it read, be it further resolved that the mayor and city council hereby resolve all people in Watertown are required to wear a mask when within six feet of someone with whom they do not reside, the obligation shall not apply while eating or drinking, in those instances, the non-masked person shall maintain a six-feet distance from any person other than one with whom they reside. All businesses and public gathering areas are expected to prominently display signs encouraging the use of masks. A mask will not be required when driving alone or with someone of the same household. This measure will take effect immediately upon passage and will automatically expire on March 31st, 2021, unless extended. Failure to comply will result in a fine of $50. That's not backbreaking, guys. I feel like this is the kind of measure that we should be taking, other communities have done it. If you feel like it hasn't been represented by science, I guess you can go do a Bing search too and look at things and try and make causation evidence off it, but this is what our doctors are asking for, I think it's the responsible thing to do, and I'm not going to turn my back on our medical professionals, so that is my motion.
Thank you, Councilman. So Councilman Hoyer has amended his motion. And Councilman Bueller, you seconded the motion.
Mayor, I would, I think I would have to rescind my second on that motion with the $50 with that enforcement included in the motion.
Is there anyone that would second the motion as Councilman Hoyer stated it?
I would second that.
Okay, we have a second by Manti. Any discussion before we vote on amending the motion? All right, all those in favor of amending the motion, or Councilman Roby, did you want to say something? Or Councilman Albertson?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, if you put in a fine like that, now you're looking at an ordinance in my mind. I think that once you put a fine in, you're confusing ordinance and resolution. I just would beg that comment.
I'll ask the city attorney to comment on that. Is that true, Matt? Can we do this with a resolution with a fine in it?
I would have to agree that if there's going to be an enforcement mechanism, it'd be very difficult to cite somebody based on the resolution.
So is it out of order to have a resolution that includes a fine?
Yes.
Mayor, then in that case, we'll go ahead and drop, the failure to comply will result in a fine of $50.
And just leave everything else the way you said it?
Leave everything else the way I said it.
Councilwoman Manti?
Yeah, I can support that.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Now it's to revise the motion, and now it's been revised again. I need some guidance on how to proceed. Attorney? Roby? Okay. How should we proceed? What's the proper process?
Has there been, so Michael made a motion to amend and then has revised his motion to amend, and that's been seconded, so it should be, there'd be a vote on the amendment to the original motion, which doesn't include the fines. So I believe the only additional language, and correct me if I'm wrong, was the language about driving in a vehicle.
I put the word required on the front there, Matt, and then, yes, it just clarifies that while you're driving in a vehicle alone or with someone of the same household, you would not be asked to wear a mask.
So there'll need to be a vote on the amended, the proposed amendment as amended.
Okay.
So that the fine, there's no vote on the fine aspect that's been amended by the amendment maker, so it'll be a vote on his proposed language as it stands right now, and then depending on the outcome of the vote, then he would go back to debate the original motion.
Okay, so the vote would be to amend the motion. And there's some comments still, did you want to make a comment, Councilman Rodemski?
We've all had 10 months to mull this over, and when we did those closures early in the year, we didn't know a lot about the coronavirus then, and we got time to get ahead of it, you know, the CDC was giving us guidance, medical professionals were giving us guidance, and that gave us time to educate the public because we weren't sure what was the right thing to do. We're asking for this mask mandate, and I guess I've never been a fan of somebody else trying to tell me how to take care of my own health. And the other thing to that is in our last council meeting, I asked about the masks, and one of the medical professionals said these masks are bidirectional, that if I'm talking to somebody that's not wearing a mask, then we should both be protected because I can, it's preventing me from expelling particles, at the same time, it's preventing me from inhaling particles. The other thing too about, you know, the seatbelt thing was mentioned, which, yes, I agree, it saved countless number of lives, but on the other hand, it's also killed some people by wearing a seatbelt. And the thing I find ironic to that is, is you can drive a motorcycle, which you are far less protected, and you're not even required to wear a helmet. Another thing with this mask mandate is we're talking about this cigarette law, yet you can stop at any convenience store here in Watertown, and you can buy a pack of cigarettes that says right on that label, "This has the potential to kill you," but people still buy them. You know, if I'm looking for some privacy in a privacy fence and my neighbor already has a fence up, does that mean I'm going to put up another fence? So with that being said, I'll be voting no on this tonight.
Councilman Albertson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just excited about the fact that we are proposing something that has a little bit more teeth in, and I appreciate the people that revised this, but putting more teeth into it, when you listen to Brookings tell about how their mask mandate, you know, we didn't know anything about this nine months ago, and there were some conflicting things. But I watch television and I listen to the radio, there aren't many conflicts that are out there right now. Most people say, social distancing, wash your hands, and wear a mask. That, I mean, that's what people are saying, and I think we need this extra push right now. I think the resolution is probably good without a mandated fine, but I think we're on the right track. Sioux Falls says that they're on the right track, they didn't, they didn't want it, we don't want it. I mean, we don't want it, but Sioux Falls found out that they couldn't do it without having it mandated. And now they're saying that things are going better in Sioux Falls. You know, I could always say, if it's bad now, what would it have been like if we hadn't done these things? I mean, what if, what if we didn't do them? I think we just have to step up and not sit back and say, well, you know what, we're responsible, and so, you know, I appreciate the people that, you know, that are saying that we're responsible and we don't want that, but I mean, I just think that when we hear about the deaths going up, and if you read the newspaper, I'm sure that all of us are very sad every day now because there are people, especially old people like me, that have been living here for many years. You know, these are our friends, these are relatives that are passing away, and we're saying, well, you know what? I, maybe I could have helped them, but I really didn't want to wear a mask, and so, and I really did want to go to that party, and so I know that I can appreciate the people telling that their businesses are down. We don't want to lose those businesses. There are things in place to help them, the state has some things to help them. We don't want them to go down, but we also don't want to be a part of not doing something that I think, I honestly believe that we, we understand that we should be doing something, we probably should be following what the doctors and what the CDC and, I mean, everybody is saying, wear a mask, and yet it's not happening, and so I for one like the idea of what's been resolved and the change in that, what has been written there. And so I hope that we'll move forward and show people that we really do want to conquer this as quickly as we can. The vaccine will be here in March, maybe, so if we're talking until March to wear a mask, let's wear a mask in Watertown.
Thank you. Councilman Roby?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to acknowledge all the people who spoke tonight, I want to acknowledge all the people that contacted me. A lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, a lot of emails didn't request a response, I did not respond, but I want to acknowledge those emails and that they were read and considered. So a lot of people weighed in. The objective that we've been working on the last few weeks is to promote mask-wearing. It does help slow the transmission of the virus, in my mind, not a silver bullet. And I think everybody on the council through this process has supported mask-wearing, you know? We currently have a resolution in place that supports mask-wearing. What has been presented tonight in print is similar. It contains stronger language. You know, as I've gone around town, I think I've seen an increase in mask-wearing, but not to the degree I expected. So when we got the language on this earlier today, I can get behind that. And I think, if I had to predict, I would guess what was proposed at the beginning of the meeting here, it's in writing, I propose it would pass. I would say, I think it will pass. And, you know, resolutions, short-term in nature, it's got an expiration date. I'll support the resolution as is written. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Councilman Hoyer?
I guess I just wanted to clarify something a little bit, I mean, yes, we're, the way that I've proposed this at this point really just adds the word required to the front. Even without the word required, the subtext is it's required, I mean, that is still pretty much how it reads. We just don't say the word required. So I guess if that makes people feel better, that's great. It's just splitting hairs, really. But I want to clarify this real quick, because this is concerning, a cloth mask, I just want to be clear, is not bidirectional. They're not, I mean, a lot of research saying that's not a thing. A cloth mask is, when it comes to all the other masks, isn't even your best choice, but it blocks you from giving it to people, it's meant to block you from transmitting to other people. It doesn't do as much to prevent them from giving it to you. That's why it takes all of us doing it for it to possibly be as effective as it should be, it doesn't really protect you as much from others. So to be clear, that's why it takes all of us kind of doing it. The smoking thing, smoking is your right, you can, in US law, of course, choose to smoke. You blowing smoke in like my kid's face, that's not your right, that's kind of looked down upon. So if you want to look at that imagery, I guess, there you go. As for some of the stuff with the masks and like people coming to a restaurant, so I have people that won't enter the restaurant because like waitstaff aren't wearing a mask. I haven't seen the people that aren't wearing a mask worry about that, they just, I mean, you go out to any of our bigger chains, all their waitstaff are wearing them, it doesn't stop those not wearing a mask from going in. But I have seen it do the opposite, so I just, I wanted to kind of point that out a little bit. Realistically, council members, if you don't pass it under the language I recommended, I mean, it's really a one-word change, and then it just clarified you don't have to wear it in your car. I'm fine still getting behind what was written before. I just, I feel like the language should be a little bit stronger than even what we're doing right now. So, yeah, again, I don't see the huge language change there, other than we're just saying required instead of just having it kind of in the subtext there. But regardless, people should be doing their part. I just, I wish we would encourage them to do it a little stronger.
Mayor, point of order, just real quick, we have a pending amendment. I don't think Councilman Hoyer's comments were out of line, and I don't think Councilman Roby's, but we are talking only about the amendment here, not about the resolution as a whole, so I want, I mean, you have the power to keep people on the resolution.
Okay, we're just talking about the amendment, not the resolution. Anyone else, Councilman Noi?
Well, yeah, and I can, if Councilman Hoyer's resolution passes, will there be more discussion after that, or will this be done? Or should I say what I?
Yes, we're talking about the amendment, then we'll talk about the resolution if it is amended.
If it passes or fails, we still go back to debating the resolution.
Okay, then I'll wait for my comments until after this vote, so we can move on that amendment.
Okay. Councilman Villar?
I would say the same thing that you just said, Josh, and if that, at that point, or at this point, I would like to call the question on the amended motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to call the question, so do we have to vote on calling the question? Okay, so I was about to do that without having to do this one more step. You were the last one. Okay, so this vote is to call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor, before I do roll call, I wasn't able to get who was the second.
Okay, it was, it was Holleen.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Albertson?
Hi.
Bueller?
Hi.
Hoyer?
Hi.
Holleen?
No.
No.
Yes, sorry.
We're calling the question. Calling the question.
Okay.
I got ahead of myself, sorry.
Okay. Lalum.
Aye.
Manti.
Aye.
Rademski.
Aye.
Robey.
Aye.
Bill Howard.
Aye.
Y.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now, we're going to vote, because the question has been called on the amendment to the resolution, which adds a stronger word, "required."
I know that Michael verbally removed it, but the amended motion still includes a while-driving part, as I understand.
Yes, so you don't have to wear a mask, well, alone in a car or driving with someone in your same household. That's part of the motion as well.
Okay.
So, he amended it to clarify that if you're in the car with your family member, you do not need to wear a mask. And the word "required" is added. So, it's added, "Resolve, all people in Watertown are required to wear a mask when within six feet of someone with whom they do not reside." So, I'm going to take a vote on that, on the amendment. Who's in favor of voting of the amendment? Say aye, and if you're opposed to the amendment, say nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristin.
Okay. Albertson.
Aye.
Bueller.
Aye.
Hoyer.
Aye.
Holleen.
No.
Lalum.
No.
Manti.
Aye.
Rademski.
No.
Robey.
No.
Bill Howard.
No.
Y. Okay, so we have six to four, motion fails.
All right, so, that was for the amendment. So, there, the resolution still stands, and I don't know if there's a motion for that or not.
I originally made that motion, Mayor.
There is, okay.
And I'm still fine with that language, and that motion can still stand.
Okay, so, we have, the motion is by Hoyer and second by Bueller, is that still the same?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it was Beth. I think it was Beth.
The original motion was Hoyer-Bueller. And that's, that's...
Okay, yes, and it's me.
That's the motion on the floor. So, is there any discussion about that? Councilman Y?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to, Dr. Tina has left the building, but I do want to thank her for speaking, and the others as well for speaking, and I apologize to her, I did not recognize her with her mask. But I tested positive for COVID on November 16th of this year, 48 hours after coming down with a fever. I'm lucky, I'm still alive today. I had low oxygen levels, high fever, which the doctor said, "At your age, you can't handle that." So, apparently, the medical profession says I'm old. But I had body aches, I ended up in the ER. I wondered if I was going to survive, I had no energy, and I don't recall much of the time where I had a fever until it broke five days later. I had no will. You could have told me my house was on fire, and I would have just laid in my bed. I've lost plenty of people to COVID, and I mourn for their families, and I mourn for them. Do cloth masks work? Do the masks that you get when you enter a store, do they work? Some in the medical profession say yes, some say no. I can tune into television, a radio station, or a newspaper that leans one way or another, and it seems you hear two totally different professional statements. The pandemic is all new to us, even the CDC on how to handle it. We're learning as we go. Science isn't perfect, and it often changes. I believe science, I believe in science, I believe in the medical field, and I trust both of them. And I respect businesses with their mask mandates. If a business requires a mask, I have no problem wearing one. I look at this resolution and its purpose. It comes with no penalty and no teeth. I think the resolution will cause confusion, it'll cause division, and possibly rage among some. It could even cause our police department to respond to more calls of noncompliance and tying up local law enforcement. And for what? They can't find them, they can't take them to jail. How do we enforce it? This will probably have the most impact on small businesses. Large retailers could probably handle a mask mandate, but it's the little guys that won't have a chance if they lose any more business. Many of them are hanging on by a shoestring, and something like this will probably force them to close the doors. And that's what a community is about, is small businesses. That's what makes a community go. It's not necessarily the big employers, or the large retailers that make it go. It's the mom-and-pop shops that make any town thrive. This mandate, or this resolution comes with no teeth. I ask the public to take the proper precautions to stay safe. I think as a council, we should strongly encourage the wearing of a mask, but I can't vote for this resolution. I ask everybody to wash their hands. I encourage you strongly to wear a mask. Keep your distance, stay at home if you don't feel well, think of others. Remember, employees of businesses don't make the rules. It comes from higher up, corporate, high-level management. Don't take it out on the clerks and the cashiers, and just be respectful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Robey.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple following comments. I don't disagree with the "splitting hairs and semantics" comments. I don't disagree with that. But because of that is the reason why I want to stick with what came out of the Unified Command. If that language agreed, that language was agreed upon by that group in this very tumultuous issue, that's why I want to stick to it. So, I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Councilwoman Manti?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm with Don on that. I wanted to make a couple comments. You know, we tested the water with the, with the fine, and we tested it and pulled our feet right back out. And that's okay, because I want to know how everybody's feeling and what everybody's looking at right now for that mask mandate or encouragement or whatever you want. But I go back to that, the medical experts that are asking us to do this are our medical experts. They're not California, or Canada, or China, or wherever. These are the folks that live with us, help us stay well, whatever. They're the ones who are asking for it. They're supported, in this case, by the Unified Command Team. So, both the language and the medical field can get behind what we're talking about right now. And I personally have a different experience with small businesses in that they want mask mandates because they want, not mask mandates, they want their own ability to mandate whether they have a mask or not. And most of them who do say they do because it's not only to protect, it's more to protect their staff, because they come into additional numerous people all day long. And one of the comments was, "Geez, we'd like a little backup on this." And, and that's, Josh alluded to that as well, in that if you don't want to wear a mask or comply with what that particular business wants you to, don't go in there. Just go somewhere else. If you're that adamant that you don't want to wear a mask to go into a certain business, don't. But don't have a hissy fit on the staff and that type of thing. But I really do believe, in this case, everything that everybody said is true, and we need to get behind this, because it's something that the Unified Command Team, I guess I'm summing up what everybody else has said, and it's something that our medical, our medical community has asked us for.
Right, thank you. Councilman Albertson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm looking at, not the last line, but the next to the last line where it says that people are asked to prominently display, or expected to prominently display. Is that language strong enough? Now, that, I'm trying to think of the conversations that we've had tonight. It would seem like if we would really use the word "mandate" there, that we would mandate people in their businesses to display signs. I don't know, I'm just thinking that, I'm looking for more strength in this thing, and, but I'll go along with it, but I just wondered, what about adding "mandated" that people will have signs in their businesses? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bueller.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, you know, I'll just kind of reiterate a number of the concerns I had at our last meeting, and, you know, the big thing to me, I think, is our elderly population, our, the folks that are in public health facilities, retirement facilities, and, you know, that's one of the bigger concerns I have, and to one of our, one of the people that testified earlier in regard to seniors, you know, I think a lot of the issues we do have with COVID in senior care are coming with the staff. I mean, it's obviously not being transmitted all by itself, and that's happening outside of those facilities. But, you know, we really have to listen to our healthcare workers. I think that, and we have to try our very best to protect them. And I don't think that this language is going to have a devastating effect on our small businesses in Watertown. I respect all my council members' opinions on this, and we all have to look at the different testimony that we've gotten tonight, and, and the things that we've read, and make our own decision. But I think Michael summed it up pretty well, when he said, "Leaders have to make hard decisions." And we're looking at the general health and welfare of the people that live around us, in our community, with our elders, and with our medical professionals that tell us that this is very important. I think we need to do this, and I would, I will vote for the wording, the verbiage that we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Villahar?
I want to start out by, by also thanking those that had the courage to speak tonight, as well as those that reached out to me over the course of the last three weeks, whether you agreed with my vote three weeks ago or not. I do respect your decisions. I did try to respond as best I could to most of them. A few of them today that came in, I maybe didn't get the chance to, but they are respected. I was one that voted against the, the resolution three weeks ago. I, I'm saddened by the loss of life and pain and suffering caused by this pandemic. I'm saddened by the divisiveness that's been caused within the community over this issue. And there may be some that question, "Well, how can you be divided in your opinion on this?" Well, I think our, our discussion tonight explains how we can be divided. I, as a, as a former small business owner, I take Mr. Lalum's, you know, comments very seriously. Josh, I, I hear you loud and clear as far as what you're saying. I don't question the science behind the mask. My wife and I have been wearing a mask, you know, very faithfully for the last several months. But I, I think we are deluding ourselves if we think that this will cause a significant increase in the numbers of people wearing a mask, or see a significant decrease in the number of active cases. Because again, you know, everybody says you can make, you can make statistics say whatever you want it to. And I, and this is a good example where I'm a firm believer in that. I, again, what Mr. Lalum presented about Minnesota and California, I look at other counties around the state that have had mandates in place, or that have had cities with, a larger city that had mandates in place, and their numbers are right at or above even in some cases where ours are. Now, up to this point, everything I sound like would say that I'm going to vote against this. But I also do respect very strongly what the opinions of our local medical professionals and frontline workers are saying. I can't ignore that. I have had a change of heart over the course of the last three weeks, because again, seeing the, seeing the, the numbers as they are and what our healthcare people are saying, I will be voting in support of this. But I am concerned about where we go from here. I think, again, the comment was made, "Well, this is going to be an incremental step." I am concerned about that. I hope we don't come back here in two weeks now again and suggest that we either tweak this, the mask issue, or we look at some kind of business closing issue, because no, I'm not going to go down that road. I can support this as it's presented tonight, but I am concerned about where we go from there. Personal responsibility is still the answer to the issue that we, that we're facing, and a resolution that we pass, whether it has enforcement provisions or sanctions or not, is not going to be the answer, but as a show of support for medical community, I will be supporting this. I just pray that when we do have a vaccine that is readily available, that it is safe and effective, and this issue starts to go behind us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'm just going to back up Glenn on the comment that it comes down to personal responsibility. It does, 100%. We can do this as a community, we can. It's just, we need to actually start doing it. We have a lot, and honestly, since our last discussion, when the last thing got passed, I've seen an uptick of mask-wearing. I have seen more people doing that than they were previously, so that's, that's fantastic. I just hope that they've coupled that with washing their hands and all the other stuff you're supposed to, because the mask, I think it was Don who said it, it's not a silver bullet. It's not. But it's a step in the right direction. The slippery slope stuff with us heading towards a closure, I mean, I just, I can't fathom that we would go down that route again. I don't see it. I think we're all trying to be very vigilant about that, and doing this is a preventative measure to ever, to prevent that from ever happening again. The last time we did it, we saw how busy a lot of those essential businesses got while small businesses were the ones that were hurt. Throughout the summer, I will also comment that many small businesses saw record numbers. So, there are some that have suffered, but there's been many that have actually done better than they usually do. So, I guess, take that how it is. We've seen positive numbers with our tax increment as well. But, again, I'm, I'm good with this language. I just hope that we really do step up and everybody does their part, because that's all we can really do for our healthcare workers, and again, our healthcare workers. So, just everyone stay safe.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Manti?
Yeah, just some final comments, because I think everybody's kind of hit the nail on the head here with, of it. I'm just going to share this real quick, because somebody texted this to me while we were talking, and it says, "If the roles were reversed and younger people were more likely to die, our parents and grandparents would do absolutely everything and anything to protect us." So, that just kind of hit home with me a little bit right now. So, anyway, I think that we're, we're, I guess, I don't, I'm going to just stop there, because I think we've all said what we need to say, and I too appreciate everybody's position on this, but unless I'm wrong, I just need one clarification. Unless I'm incorrect, was Julie saying that the industry, the public, the, oh, I'm just getting tired. Our convention and visitor industry, are they saying that without the masks, we're actually losing our numbers, that our numbers are behind because we don't have the safety precautions in place? Is that what she said?
She's here, so I'll let her answer.
Oh, thanks, Julie. Yeah.
Beth, I think what my, kind of the, the moral of my story, kind of in a nutshell, is that we need to start planning for recovery, because we do plan out so far ahead, and we lost basically 100% of our meetings for 2020, and a lot of them for 2021, and it's very slow coming back. And the U.S. Travel Association and all of our industry partners, to include all of the major airlines, our layering mitigation efforts and masks are a huge part of that. And in order to bring that business back to Watertown, as recovery is coming, because we have such high numbers right now, no one is going to look and look to plan in the future with our numbers as high as they are. So, definitely masks are endorsed by the travel industry nationwide, and also the Convention and Visitors Bureau for that reason.
Okay, thank you. That, then that helps me pull this all together, then. So, pulling this all together, and why I'm going to favor this resolution, is because, A, our numbers are out of, you know, bounds. Secondly, our healthcare facilities and our healthcare providers have asked us to do something. We have businesses... We have businesses that will come back, provided that we all take some responsibility. So if we want our convention and visitor business to come back, if we want our small businesses to continue to stay open, if we want our healthcare workers not falling over on their feet because they're so exhausted from working short-staffed, if we want our small businesses to stay open because they feel comfortable asking their customers to wear masks and not have to worry about getting into a confrontation every time, I think if you put all of those things together, I think that would make the strongest casement possible for what we have written to pass. And because all that incremental stuff, I think somebody brought that up, we don't have to go down that route. We don't have to close anything up. We don't have to continue to lose convention money and all those kinds of things if we turn this around. And yes, the personal responsibility, the mask, the hand washing, all those kinds of things, yes, those are all part of it. But we have to, as leadership, take a stand in the sand, if that's what you want to call it. I mean, we have to at least stand up and say, we are doing our best for the traveler and visitor businesses, the small businesses to stay open, our medical community. List them all off, and that's what we're asked to be doing the best for. And I've said, we tested it to see just what would happen about it, and no, we don't want to give fines and things like that. So this is what we have to give. This is the best we have to give right now at what would fly in our community and what people would be able to accept. And I don't know what else to say, except that I would ask that anybody who's considering not voting for this, please, listen to this. Again, this is not us against them. It's not a political thing. It's just saying, you know, I mean, I personally am more comfortable going in a place where people are wearing, more wearing masks. And I think that most people respect what businesses want to have, as far as masks or no masks. I'm just saying that we need to all take care of each other. And that's, I guess, what I'm going to try to do, with having something that I feel is a very reasonable thing to do. And that's, pass this resolution, and it's going to help each, everybody. So there you go.
Thank you. Councilman Lallum?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to move my mask so everyone can hear. I don't want to repeat what everyone has talked about here. A couple of things, just for clarification. This isn't a mandate, is basically, it's a stronger verbiage that what we were trying to do was get more people to wear masks, to what Councilman Roby brought up last week, or a few weeks ago, is we need, as a community, to be better about wearing it, wearing it properly, making sure that we are taking care of our own, helping our healthcare workers. Unified Command was very, very adamant about whatever we can give them, they will take. They need the help that they can. It's what we've talked about since the beginning, is slowing the curve, you know, giving them more time. While we are obviously not doing that with the numbers going at what they are. So we need to make sure that we are taking care of our own, you know, and Watertown is very good about doing that. I would say, if you're a small business and you want to have a mask mandate in your business, by all means, I don't think any one of us, I know none of us would, would stop going there because of that. And I think most of the majority of Watertown would respect your decision as a business owner to do that. The only question I have is the timeframe on this. It's a very long one. And I know when we talked with Casey DeBoer, they brought up the vaccines and how long it will take and who is going to be able to get those. It's not like we're going to have 20,000 vaccines, you know, by January 1st. It's just not going to happen. I personally would rather see this as a little bit shorter, and then we take a look at it every single, you know, every meeting. Or maybe it goes until February, the first meeting in February. And then we look at it then, if our numbers are still going up and the vaccines aren't coming out as fast as we would obviously hope they would, that we can do it for another month. So it, it's not a life or death situation, per se, for, for me, as far as a vote. But I would like to see that just a little bit shorter, just because it is a resolution, not an ordinance. And then we can make that comment based on there. But I would hope that our community would do what is best for, not only our community members, but the people that are taking care of us. So we need to make sure that we are coming together, rallying, you know, and frankly, like we would for a natural disaster, we're using that on this, because whether we like it or not, we're in a disaster, one way or another. I mean, the COVID, it's not going to go away. The vaccines will not cause it to go away. They're not 100% effective. That is, that is, there's every single one of those vaccine makers are saying it's not 100% effective. So it's going to be here, but we have to rally as a community and say, this is how we're going to try to get through this. And not sit there and argue back and forth about, well, this person isn't wearing a mask, that person is. We just don't need that. Whether your personal responsibility is, I'm not wearing one because I don't have to, so be it. That is yours. But don't do it for you. Do it for your neighbor, your parents, your medical worker, things of that nature. That is what Don has talked about repeatedly. That's what the mask-up Watertown has, has been proposing. Take it and use it for what it is. Let's help us get through this together. Small businesses, they're pretty hardy in this town. Support your small businesses. And let's move forward with that. So, only comments I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, I could make the motion if we needed to, to put it to the first meeting in February, but I don't know if anyone would have issues.
You can always shorten it to later.
I mean, I, I don't disagree with you, Adam, but I think, I mean, this is something we review every meeting anyway, so we've got the ability to change that time period at, at any future meeting, if we see fit, would be my, so I guess, in interest of time and expediency, I'd say, let's keep it as is. But that's just my, my personal opinion on your comments, Adam.
And I, I can live with it being longer. It's just, it's so far out there. And in talking with the Unified Command, they know that it's going to take time. You know, I mean, I guess if we can shorten it, you know, that would be fine too. But let's just take our, our community into effect and just say, this is what we're looking at doing, and let's try to get through it.
Did you make a motion?
I can rescind that motion.
Okay. Anyone else before we take a vote?
Did someone second it?
No, he took back his motion. So we...
I would like to speak.
Okay, Councilman Hollein?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to do my part to make the tone of the debate that has been going on in this community less vitriolic. I purposely chased down Dr. Malanson. I believe I've got her married name right. I know her as Dr. Tina, when we were both growing up on North Broadway here in Watertown. I was a few years older than her. And I want, and I told her, I said, as someone who is opposed to masks, I wanted to apologize if she has had people yelling at her. That is not my intention. I said, you do understand that these people are just as frustrated, just as confused, just as scared as you are, and they don't know what to do. So sometimes people react in a manner that we don't want them to. I will say that I want to make this clear, that some of that problem with people reacting that way has come from leaders across the nation and in this city, where you're either painted as a supporter of science and a supporter of healthcare workers, or a disbeliever in science and someone who does not care for healthcare workers. I want to make this perfectly clear. That is not the case. Painting someone as such is unfair and inaccurate. If someone opposes this resolution, that does not mean we do not support our healthcare workers. There are many things that can go on in a person's mind. This is a very confusing and complicated topic, and people of good minds and good conscience can disagree with this. And we should promote that in this community, as opposed to sowing the seeds of fear and distrust and division that has been going on. I want Watertown to be better. I think it has been a much better tone tonight in the debate. I want to say, people can disagree on many, on many levels. The science is unproven. I want to point people out to the Great Barrington Declaration, which is a declaration signed by over 50,000 medical and public health scientists and medical practitioners. This just started over a month ago, and 50,000 people are saying, these are experts, who are saying that not only do we not believe in masks, but that we believe that the current push is actually counterproductive to the overall and long-term health of society. I will also point out that I have been contacted off the record, and I know several other council members have as well, from healthcare professionals in this community, who have told me that they do not support the mask mandate, or they have very grave concerns about it. They do not speak up for fear of retribution. Now, that has happened right here in South Dakota. The CEO of Sanford Health, Kelby Krabenhoff, spoke out that said he had COVID, so he's not going to wear a mask. Two days later, not coincidentally, he was let go, I mean, we can read between the lines. He was fired because that he wasn't toeing the line. There are also people with good conscience who can disagree on the legality of this, on fears of government overreach and infringement on personal rights. So far, in Watertown and across the nation, these grabs for telling people how, how to live have been justified on emergency powers. I want to specify that there is nothing in the U.S. Constitution that says emergency powers. The only, the only term, emergency power in South Dakota Constitution, is for the emergency transfer of power if the governor dies, or if we are invaded by a foreign power. This is being justified in Watertown on South Dakota Codified Law, Section 9-32. The very first line says that a municipality may have power to suppress disease. If you look closer at that chapter, this chapter, while, that is a very, very broad definition of trying to make this legal, as far as forcing a mask mandate or anything else, because if you look at the rest of South Dakota, of Chapter 9-32, we are talking Section 9-32-5, Maintenance of Public Toilets in a Business District, 9-32-6, Stables, Privies, Sesspools, 7, Slaughterhouses, Foundries, Livery Stables. This is not talking about a public health pandemic. This is talking about maintenance of your town for health, and maintenance of your town to cut down on diseases at a time when we had horses going in the street and doing their business and causing typhoid and polio and all of those other things. So the legality of this is very much in doubt. And that's why Supreme Court Justice Alito and others on the United States Supreme Court have said that they, specifically, they say that these are unconstitutional. They just haven't been challenged in court yet. So I say, there are a lot of people in this community, myself included, who have very grave concerns about the government overreach going on here and the infringement upon personal rights. I agree that this resolution might not be that bad, but where are we going with that? I'll get to that in a second. But aren't our individual rights, as defined and protected in the United States Constitution, the South Dakota Constitution, and South Dakota Codified Law, aren't they every bit as important as a gesture in behalf of public health of unproven efficacy? And I would say, defending our personal rights is not something that can be trivialized, even in the face of a healthcare pandemic. I personally like the seatbelt argument, but I like using it as an argument against masks. There's a lot of differences between this, and that actually proved that the mask mandate is different and should not be passed. Number one, the seatbelt debate, that had decades of information, proven information of people surviving or dying in car crashes. When they started getting passed, you had proven statistics from states that passed a seatbelt law to states that did not, that proved that seatbelts saved lives. That is definitely not the case right now. You can point to some states that passed incredibly restrictive provisions to cut down on COVID, and their rates are just as high as anyplace else, including ours. Number two, seatbelts are effective only when worn correctly. That's a very important part. We are not doing our part. If you're going to push masks, push people, educate them to wear them correctly, and wear clean masks. This mask here is made of cloth. I've worn it. It's been in my pocket. It's not effective. Kids going around wearing masks, touching them, putting them in their pockets, this is not effective. It decreases the efficiency of the mask every time you use it. So either you want to grab a new mask, or you want to wash it after every usage, that would be like using a seatbelt, and every time you use it, the seatbelt becomes less effective. Or possibly, I could use a seatbelt made out of cloth or made out of plastic. Gets to my next point. Seatbelts have a proven safety standard. It is proven by crash tests, proven by studies. It is already installed by the manufacturer. We don't have that. My cloth mask is not as effective as an N95 mask. We all know that. How I put it on is nowhere near as effective as how you need to put on masks in a medical, military, or hazmat setting. Those people have to wash their hands, sanitize them. They have to sanitize the face mask. Then they put it on their, on their face. When they're done, they sanitize everything again, or they throw out the mask completely. I also want to make a point that seatbelts only got widespread use after the federal government tied highway funding to it. They threatened the states to say, we will cut off your highway funding if you do not pass a seatbelt law. So the states, obviously, they had to comply. So the states passed a penalty. I would argue on the resolution, again, this is softer language, so I, I can understand why people could vote for this. But where are we going with it? Because how far will we go? If the numbers get worse, are we going to push the mandates? Are we going to make them more restrictive? When the vaccines come out, are we going to force vaccinations upon people? Because right now, masks are maybe 2% effective, maybe 50% effective. The argument I hear more often than anything is, they can't do any harm, so why not? Well, couldn't you make the same arguments for forced vaccinations on your, on your people? Those are 95% effective. I understand that no one is ready to go down that road here. But I guarantee you, we are going to have that conversation across America and the world. And are we going to go that way? We should be prepared for that right now. So I want to just say, I'm not a firebrand. I disagree, but I'm actually not as adamant in my opposition as I may sound here. I just want to speak for a lot of people who have contacted me, expressing their concerns. So I'm going to vote against it, but I want to make something very clear. I totally understand, and I don't disagree with anyone who votes for it. I can totally understand why you would, okay? But I just want you to reciprocate that respect to people who might oppose it. And that's, that's called just having a good conversation. This is a very complicated issue. This should not be an easy debate. This should be complicated. I think the citizens of Watertown can be happy, at least that their council is having a robust discussion upon it, and upon a lot of levels of this. So I totally understand where people are coming from. I understand the safety issue. I understand protecting loved ones. I don't fault you for it. Personally, though, I'm going to oppose it for the reasons I said. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoyer?
Pass the question.
Okay, we have a...
Second.
Yeah, no, we don't have an amendment. So the, we're going to vote on whether to call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And Kristen, did you get that? Was Vilhauer and Y? No, oh, sorry. Who was it? Hoyer, oh, sorry. Hoyer and Vilhauer.
Yep.
Okay. Vote to call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay.
Okay, Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
No.
Lallum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we're going to vote on this. I'm going to reread it one more time, just to be clear. It's as was proposed. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council hereby resolve, all people in Watertown shall wear a mask when within six feet of someone with whom they do not reside. This obligation shall not apply while eating or drinking. In those instances, the non-masked person shall maintain a six-feet distance from any person other than one with whom they reside. All businesses and public gathering areas are expected to prominently display signs encouraging the use of masks. This measure will take effect immediately upon passage and will automatically expire on March 31, 2021, unless extended. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristen.
Okay, Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Nope.
Lallum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
No.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Does anyone need a break? Let's take a five-minute break here.
Mayor, could I, could I just, on behalf of Josh and I, the only reason why we've...
Hey, everybody. We're gonna get moving again. We are on item B. Second reading of ordinance number 20-32, an amendment to chapter 24.06, subdivision procedure of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. And I'm hoping that our city attorney, or excuse me, our city engineer, public works director Heath Von I is on, and it looks like he is. And Heath, will you please explain this to us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you for your time tonight and the discussions you've had thus far. I'll try to keep this brief, but yet informative enough so you're familiar with what's going on here on the second reading. This is our proposed amendments to chapter 24, the subdivision regs for the city Watertown. As I mentioned in the first reading, chapter 21, the zoning ordinance essentially tells property owners in town what they can do on their land as far as permitted uses are concerned. And then 24 kind of guides them through the process on how to do things on their land, how to subdivide it, how to plat it, and those processes. So in this amendment of 24, we're trying to streamline those processes. And this has been a group, a community effort. We've had a development task force that's been assembled for a good handful of few years now under Mayor Karen. When it was initiated, they explored looking at new engineering design standards, which we've since passed. And then now this item's come forward to help streamline the subdivision review process and what's required of the developers to submit and when it's required for them to submit certain components of critical information for staff's review and planning commission's review and approvals. With all that being said, I just want to give some quick credit to the developers, the realtors, members of First District, some business owners, engineering consultants, and Councilman Hollein and Councilman Vilhauer, that were all part of this development task force committee. This was recommended for approval by the planning commission. And urban planner Brandy Hampton or myself can help walk through any details that the council will care to hear about tonight.
All right, thank you. I would like to get a motion before I open the public hearing. I have a motion by Vilhauer and a second by Hollein. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. If anyone is online and wants to speak about this issue, please just state your name and say permission to speak. Otherwise, anybody here? There's only one person in there. If he wants to speak, he's welcome. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain council discussion. Are there any questions or comments? Councilman Vilhauer?
Mayor, or council colleagues, the only comment that I would have, I'm excited about this, being involved in the process of, you know, going back a number of months now. I'm excited about it. I think it'll facilitate things for developers, for our staff. But I do want to put a word of caution out. We're giving our staff a lot of authority, as I understand it, by these changes that we're making. I think we probably have a high level of trust with the current staff that we've got. That will not always be the case necessarily, more than likely, going forward. So I just want to throw that word of caution out there. You might think this is a slam dunk as you vote, but I did want to throw that word of caution out there. But I think the potential good definitely outweighs the negative that I just laid out.
Thank you. Councilman Lalum?
Glenn, I appreciate your comments there. Just a shout out to the people that worked on this. This was a long process. I know there was a lot of input, not just from the city staff, but, you know, developers and Mr. Silken, who's in the room as well. Just huge amount of work that went into it. But to your point, I do want to make sure that we don't just think this is an end-all-be-all. We need to make sure that we, you know, keep track of this over as we go forward here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristin.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Why?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C is the second reading of ordinance number 20-38, the Board of Adjustment vote, an amendment to chapter 21.02, administration and enforcement of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown. I have a motion by Lalum and a second by Why. And I will ask the public works director, city engineer Heath Von I, to explain this one.
Thank you, Mayor. As touched on briefly in the last item, this is related to chapter 21, the zoning regulations for the city. And this item comes to the council on second reading to complete an attempt to help streamline some of the approvals for conditional uses. One of the functions of the zoning ordinance is that we have a list of permitted uses. And then we also have several conditional uses in many of our zoning districts. And what this specifically addresses is the number of Board of Adjustment members that are required to vote in order to approve a conditional use. The previous language required that two-thirds of the members of the board had to vote to approve a conditional use. This amendment would reduce that to two-thirds of the members of the board that are present at the meeting. And it's essentially a one-vote swing or one-vote change, depending on the number of BOA members that are present in the room. But if they are all not present, that what used to be five votes now would be reduced to four votes to pass a conditional use. So it's essentially a reduction of the BOA members needed to pass a conditional use. And it's changed from two-thirds of the members of the board down to two-thirds of the members present and voting. And again, Brandy Hampton, the urban planner, or myself can help answer any details. This also was recommended for approval to the council by the planning commission on a vote of six to one.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak about this, please state your name and say permission to speak. Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing and see if the council has any questions or comments. Councilman Why?
Mayor, do they have, I guess at their meetings, do they have any issue getting a full?
Occasionally, they do. But there are two alternates that helps a lot to get a quorum. So a quorum is four, but it takes five if you have two-thirds. So, you know, if you don't have enough people there, you either can't pass it or you need to have, in the way it is now, everyone has to be there for it to be reasonable. So having a two-thirds vote of the members present does relax that a little bit. But there have been several situations where people pulled their agenda item because there weren't enough members present to give a favorable vote, so.
And I just want to say I appreciate what the BOA does. You know, it's a thankless job. They're totally 100% volunteers. They're people of our community. Do we need to look at expanding the members there so that maybe we can have more BOA members present at a meeting? And is that your decision, or who would make that?
No, that's established in our ordinance. But we did add, we had a, the two alternates used to just be for the Board of Adjustment. Now they're actually for the planning commission as well. That was an ordinance change we made recently. But this particular item is the voting requirement. It, that that changes. And having the two alternates does help to reach a quorum. Councilman Vilhauer?
Just to clarify, this does not change the requirements relative to a variance request, correct? This is only for a conditional use.
Right, this is conditional use.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other? Councilman Albertson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just speaking in favor of this, having served several years on the Board of Adjustment, that's a tough thing when you have to have nearly everybody vote for something and then to get people there. So I would speak for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Heath.
To both Councilman Why and Councilman Vilhauer's questions, and why you have one dissenting vote on this subject, is kind of one of the premises behind it is that the conditional uses should be a little more fluent as far as approvals go. They're not as stringent or encumbering to the neighbors as some of the variances are. And so there's also discussions amongst staff and some of the planning commissioners in the past on how to move to further ordinance amendments in chapter 21 that give some explicit design criteria for conditional uses that make them all the more expedient to approve, where staff could even come to a point where administratively you have a conditional use and if it meets certain design criteria, that conditional use can be allowed. And that's how other communities sometimes handle those conditional uses. So this whole process is trying to, this is a baby step in the right direction to try to help process those conditional uses all the more efficiently.
Yes, thank you. Some communities spell out what the conditions are. We don't, our Board of Adjustment can make them up. Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay.
Mayor, I don't know if I had a motion and a second on this one.
Okay, it was Lalum, motion, and Why, second.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
No problem.
Okay. Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Why?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item D is the second reading of ordinance number 20-44, an amendment to subsection 1 of section 2.0118 of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown to make four additional types of alcoholic beverage licenses. I have a motion by Hollein.
Second.
And a second by Rademski. And I will ask the city attorney, Matt Roby, to explain this, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance that would add four additional types of alcoholic beverage, special alcoholic beverage licenses to our arsenal here in Watertown. State law allows for these seven types of licenses. Prior to this, the city had adopted only three of those licenses. So the new four licenses would primarily, the one that would primarily be used, I would suspect, would be the on-sale license, which would allow an appropriate applicant to serve hard alcohol at a special event. The remaining three licenses were created in the last few years by the legislature that were intended to account for situations like auctions, silent auctions, that sort of thing, where the alcohol or the wine or the beer is donated for the purposes of being auctioned off. So really, this just adds these four types of licenses that the finance office can now issue or can bring forward for issuance by the council.
All right, thank you. If we weren't confused before, four more opportunities to be confused. Does it, yes. The good question, would anyone like to recuse themselves? Nope. Okay, because we don't have any of these licenses yet, I suppose. All right, any comments from the council? Or questions? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hoyer?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Why?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item E is application for a new retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to LND Scott doing business as Sassy's on Broadway at 12 South Broadway. I have a motion by Hollein and a second by Lalum. And I will ask Kristin to tell us about this one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I might actually kind of just go over because we'll get into E, F, G, and H are all related to the alcohol. So the first two are just for new retail, straightforward application for a new retail malt beverage. And then the other ones for the wine insider license. And I can't answer any questions specific to them. Otherwise, G and H are actually transfer applications. So they're all kind of straightforward, but I can answer any questions.
All right, thank you. I will start by opening the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? If you're online, just say your name and request permission to speak. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Councilman Roby?
I just want to go on the record, recusing myself from items E, F, G, and H. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Hoyer?
Mayor, I'll be recusing myself from the same.
All right.
Mayor?
Councilman Why?
I'll reiterate that as well.
Okay, we have three recusals. We still have a quorum. All right, Councilman Roby, did you have something else? Or is your hand just still up?
Delinked with the hand, my apologies.
No problem. All right, any comments other than recusals? All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Yeah. You've seconded it. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item F is application for a new retail on-off sale wine and cider license to The Red Door LLC doing business as The Red Door LLC at 717 South Broadway. I have a motion by Lalum and a second by Hollein. And, oh, let's see here. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone is online wishing to speak on this issue, please state your name, say, request permission to speak. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council? All right, none. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristin.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor, I just noticed something. We said it's doing business as The Red Door. If you look at the application, it's actually doing business as The Five Star Dive Bar. So it's not quite right in our agenda versus the application.
Oh, I see, business name. Oh, but below it, it says The Red Door. Okay.
But it's DBA.
Yeah, I do. Okay, so, city attorney, what shall I do?
The corporate entity was correct, so I don't think there needs to be other action. But we should go back and amend that on the agenda for the record.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All righty, item G is application for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license and video lottery license from Imart Stores LLC doing business as Imart Stores to 25 West Kemp to IYS Ventures LLC doing business as Imart Stores at the same location. Okay, I have a motion by Hollein and a second by Lalum. And I will open the public hearing. If anyone is here to speak on this issue, please state your name for the record. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and see if the council has any questions or comments. Council? Not, oh, Councilman Lalum?
On this one, is it, it's a transfer, but doesn't say, is it just from a corporation to an individual? Is that really what we're looking at?
Yes, it's just a transfer of the ownership. So from Imart LLC to the IYS Ventures LLC.
Okay, Councilman Vilhauer?
A question that came up in my mind as I was going through, this is the, this one and the next one are the Freedom Stations in town, correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Something doesn't quite make sense because the legal description of license premise is the same on both applications.
H is inactive.
One's inactive.
Okay, so that, so it's still using, so it's using the Kemp Avenue?
Yeah.
Location, okay.
The, yep, the one under H is actually inactive at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Glenn Vilhauer is an eagle eye. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good catch on those. Item H is application for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license and video lottery license from Imart Stores LLC doing business as Imart Stores, 615 Ninth Avenue Southeast, to IYS Ventures LLC doing business as Imart Stores at the same location. I have a motion by Lalum, second by Vilhauer. And I'll open the public hearing. If anyone is here to speak about this, please state your name for the record. Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristin.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Hollein?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item I, J, K, and L all are relating to the same issue. And I'll let the public works director describe those, but I'll read the titles one at a time. I is the first reading of ordinance number 20-39, a zoning text amendment to chapter 21.28, C-3 Highway Commercial District of the revised ordinances of the city of Watertown, adding auto body repair shops as a conditional use. Oh, yeah, this is the first reading, sorry. Okay, Heath, we want to please tell us about these.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, these next four are all related, like Kristin's last four were. These are zoning amendments that account for the use of auto body repair shops in certain zoning districts throughout the community. The reason this surfaced was that there's a business in town that was moving some auto body services from one of their current locations to a next-door neighboring property that they were acquiring. And that they contacted us as far as some of their site improvements. And as we do, we checked off that use on that site. And lo and behold, we found out that auto body repair shops are nowhere to be found in our zoning ordinances. So rather than requesting that they all be shut down immediately, we went to work to draft some ordinances to make them allowable under conditional uses and permitted uses. These next four items talk about the C-1, the C-3, and the I-1 districts. And then the fourth item is providing a definition for auto body repair shops. The action, or the first reading right now before us is explicitly for the, the conditional use in a C-3 Highway Commercial District.
All right, thank you.
Brandy's online. If anybody has any questions for her, and I can help answer them.
Thank you, Heath. Any questions? Councilman Lalum?
More of a procedural question. Are we gonna go through each individual one? Or are we just kind of saying these are all under the same?
Well, they're each, they're each a little different. I'll just ask you on each of them. For the C-3, any questions about putting this in the C-3 zone, which is the Highway Commercial District? Okay, then we'll move on to J, which is the I-1 district. Any questions about that? No?
I-1 is a permitted use. I'll point that out.
Oh, okay, thank you for making that distinction there. So a permitted use can be just given on the spot. A conditional use requires a public hearing and action by the Board of Adjustment. Little more flexibility in the I-1 industrial zone than in the commercial zones. Okay, and then K is the C-1, Community Commercial District, and it's a conditional use, which requires a hearing. Any questions about that? Councilman Vilhauer?
Heath or Brandy, as I recall, the planning commission spent very little time discussing before they voted on this. Is that correct?
Yes. Brandy, if you could chime in on that as well, please. Any specific comments from the planning commission?
They actually, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
So the planning commission actually had this in front of them a couple times because just looking through ordinance holistically to really make sure that we were putting it everywhere it needed to go, we actually had to add the C-1 district because there are so many auto body repair shops that exist in our downtown area. So we wanted to at least make that a conditional use allowable in the C-1 district.
Okay, thanks, Brandy.
Yes, they're all over the place. And it's just, we didn't realize until we came upon one that was, we don't even have a use for it, so this will change that. And then finally, the last item, L, is the definition of auto body repair shops. Any questions or comments, council? Councilman Lalum?
I'm kind of just shocked that we didn't have a definition of it, to tell you the truth. Must have been one of those that just slipped through.
So it was, why would you have a definition if you don't have a use?
Pretty sure they've been fixing cars for a while, so.
Yes, that is true. I, yeah, maybe they used to be encompassed by auto body service.
And just to clarify, Mayor, that was an attempt with my dry sense of humor. Staff obviously did not contemplate suggesting shutting any of them down, so. But we're glad to help get this cleaned up. So we appreciate everybody's time on it.
Make everything legitimate. Okay. Go ahead, Brandy.
To add to, we had service station motor vehicle as a definition, but it explicitly excluded spray paint operations or body repair. So we just, we didn't have a use anywhere really in ordinance for it, even in places where we thought it could potentially work. So this will clean that up.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, moving on. Item N is approval of the workers' compensation policy renewal for 2021 and authorization for the finance officer to issue a special check for payment of the premium.
Mayor?
Did I skip one? Oh, I'm sorry, Kristen, I skipped your appropriations. Okay, we're going to back up a little and we'll do M first. M is the first reading of ordinance number 20-45, Supplemental Appropriations. Kristen, will you please tell us about this?
Thank you, Mayor. Before the council, this is the first reading. It's the time of year where all the departments are asked to look at their budgets and see how we're ending up for 2020. To supplement the budget, we're required to do a two reading to an ordinance, so this is the first reading. I don't think I'm going to specifically go through each line item. If there are any questions from the council, I can give you a little bit more detail if anybody has any specifics. Otherwise, what this will do is on the second reading, it'll supplement the budget and that's it.
Alright, any questions? Councilman Vilhauer?
Kristen, it's probably a fair statement that one time or another throughout the recent months, we have probably seen this come before us at one, at one time or another.
That is correct. A lot of what you see before you has already been kind of given the prior authorization by the council. A few of them were adjustments due to wage study that was necessary. There again was approved by the council. Some are repairs that kind of came up that no department was planning on and it was this close to the budget appropriation. So instead of bringing forward like a contingency, this just made a little bit more sense. So no, I wouldn't say that anything jumped out at me. Everything pretty much has been discussed prior.
Thanks, Kristen.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you, Kristen. Now we'll do N. Approval of the workers' compensation policy renewal for 2021 and authorization for the finance officer to issue a special check for payment of the premium. Motion by Vilhauer and a second by Y. And I'll ask the finance officer, Kristen Bobzine, to explain it.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. It is the time for the work comp renewal. I did want to point out that we actually saw a decrease of around $30,000 this year. I think a lot of that was just due to we had a higher renewal credit than the previous year and then just a few adjustments to wages, but all in all, the work comp renewal looks good.
Good. Councilman Lalum?
Kristen, on that, is that going to be like a one-time credit that, so it looks lower this year, but next year could be $30,000 higher?
No, we get that every year. A lot of it is based off of, the renewal credit is based off of just the fact that we renew. And then, of course, anytime we have a lot of work comp claims, everything gets adjusted. But so far, we should continue to see all this. We haven't lost that credit. I don't know if anybody remembers, but I think it was around five years ago we did. We had a couple significant claims. But no, this is what I would anticipate seeing going forward as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Rademski?
Kristen, how many work comp claims did we actually have last year?
I would have to actually go in and look at that. I don't know off the top of my head. I know Jelaine, I think, I don't know if Jelaine's still on. I don't know if she would know that answer either. But I don't think we've had any significant ones.
Alright.
So yes, that's true. We have not have any significant work comp claims. And I would say, you can give me just a minute here, I can pull it up. In 2020, it's looking like we had approximately 23-ish, give or take.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Vilhauer?
Kristen, we, we are on the same, the utility, utility department and the city are on, are part of the same policy, correct?
That is correct. Within the attachment, you will see the breakdown between what utilities will be paying and what the city will be paying. So the city's contribution will be the $223,457.
I, I'm assuming it's mutually beneficial to both parties, probably especially to the utilities department, to be part of the one policy. Is that a fair statement as well?
I would think so because that way we're getting those credits and adjustments based off of, we've been a member of the work comp for a long time, so that helps with our renewal too.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Alright, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please, Kristen?
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Holleen?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item O is approval of the 2021 Aviation General Liability Policy Renewal without the terrorism risk insurance coverage and authorization for the finance officer to issue a special check to pay the premium in the amount of $8,860. Motion by Lalum, second by Holleen. And Kristen, want to tell us about this?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Again, it's the time for the renewal for the general liability at the airport. I did want to point out, I put into the motion to not accept the terrorism insurance. The City of Watertown has never done that. It's an additional, I think it's around $900 to do that. If anybody in the council wants to add that, I would, we'd have to change the motion. The increase on this was around $1,700, which is, I mean, it's pretty significant. It's about a 23% increase, but it's right in line with what we saw last year. It seems to be with everything that's kind of changing in the airline industry. They kind of keep warning us that we'll see this. I believe last year was around a 30% increase. If there's any other questions, I can try to answer them.
Thank you, Kristen. Councilman Holleen?
Thank you, Mayor. Kristen, what would terrorism risk insurance coverage get us had we gone with it? Or had you, what would it get us if we went with it?
You know, I don't specific, I don't know the specifics of that. I guess the city's never elected it, so I've never really dug into it. I can't, I can't answer that. I, I think what it does is if we would have a terrorist attack, then those types of coverage would kick in. I think it's kind of that whole, maybe Matt jumped on. Let Matt answer.
I can't, I can't recite any specific language, but you're, that's exactly right. So after, this is, came about kind of after 9/11, I believe, that most insurers excluded coverage for acts of terror in traditional policies. But they now by law have to offer terrorism coverage and then we have to explicitly decline it. So it's, it's really cheap, but it is typically something that a lot of, you know, private insurance will decline. I don't have any opinion, I guess, on whether or not we should.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Lalum?
If I recall from a couple years ago when we, we, I think I asked a similar question, it really covered, it's like a rider on your, on your policy where if there is an actual terrorist attack, then they cover another, a certain portion of it, above and beyond what the normal coverage would be. So we just looked at the, we weighed the pros and cons of it.
Alright, anyone else? Yes, Councilman Vilhauer?
Kristen, am I looking this right, that there were 14 different companies that an offer was extended to to make a proposal and only one replied?
Yep, that's the same way it was last year as well.
And is this the same company as, as last year as well, then?
Yes, it is.
That's, strikes me as being odd, but I guess it is what it is.
At least we got one. Alright, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Holleen?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Vilhauer?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Item P is authorization for the mayor to sign all necessary documents with TSP Inc. related to the renovation of the proposed city hall building and grounds. And I'll explain this one after we get a motion. Motion by Vilhauer and a second by Lalum. So we, we did a request for proposals and we got six different, really good proposals, actually. It was very competitive. And we decided to go with TSP to help us design the renovations of the city, the Wells Fargo Building into our new city hall, including the grounds. And the, the TSP was selected for a couple of reasons. They have someone who lives in Watertown that's going to be the project manager. They were the only one that had someone who actually lives in Watertown that would be the project manager. But also, TSP has done numerous renovations of city halls. And there were photos after photos in the proposal of all the different ones that they'd done, along with how much it cost. And so they gave us a great deal of confidence. There, there were some really stiff competition, I have to say that. But we, this is on a very fast track. We just got the proposals last week and reviewed them and made the decision on Thursday. And we don't have a contract yet with TSP, but we'll be taking care of that. We'll make sure it's got all the right things in it. And if there are any questions, we'll bring it back to the council. But this would authorize me to sign the documents. So does anybody have any questions? Councilman Holleen?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this, you signing the documents, is this committing us to a, a fee or a monetary amount already?
It is, and there's a, the fee isn't set because we don't have, we don't know what the construction cost is going to be yet, but we'll negotiate that based upon what we actually decide to build. And, and it will vary if we decide not to do anything with the grounds, but they've already done the design of the grounds, it would probably be a little bit higher than if we did do, based on a percent. But there is a, a fee for, to get started, which would be covered in the overall percentage. And I'm trying to, I'm looking that up right now with the beginning, does anybody remember what that was?
Yeah, Mayor, that was $15,000 for the Phase 1 fee for the preliminary work.
Thank you. So, yes, I see it here. So Phase 1 is a conceptual plan and cost estimate, it's $15,000. And the design and construction will be negotiated lump sum based on estimated construction cost. So there, the firms were all in the range that, you know, six and a half up to maybe 9% of the total costs. And so we expect it's going to be in the range of $120,000 to $235,000 total, including the $15,000. If our estimates are right. Our estimates could be way off, but.
Which would lead me to my second question. I don't anticipate our estimates being off. TSP is a great firm. The local person here is a great, great person. And your words on their behalf were true and, and convincing. But just on the off chance that, let's say, the number comes in far higher than what we expected, is there protection, is there a protection mechanism for the taxpayers that we could reconsider it?
Matt, can you answer that?
Well, I, I haven't seen an agreement, so I don't know exactly how that would be accomplished. I, I guess I'm not sure. Are you talking about the project itself or what we're going to pay TSP?
Either, I guess.
Because the project documents themselves will, prior to bid, will be approved by the city. And so we wouldn't be committing ourselves to any certain size or relinquishing any power in that respect. But this would authorize the mayor to enter into a standard consulting agreement with TSP that would presumably be based on a percentage of the estimated cost of construction. But if, if they propose a flat fee or something to that effect, the council could, or, I don't know, at this point, the council could just simply not approve the mayor to have that authority until they see a formal contract. That's, I suppose that's the, that's the hard and fast answer.
The, the Phase 1 will get us going and the, the second part is to be negotiated once we know more about what we're planning to do. All in all, they'll give us the estimate. And then, these are pretty standard normally, so I guess it's your comfort level.
I'm comfortable with it. I was just sorry to gum up the works. I'm in favor.
That's alright.
Yeah, I, I guess based upon my, our experience too with TSP, I've got no qualms in.
Right. This is not our first time using TSP as a consultant, so we're familiar with their terms. Heath, did you want to add something?
Well, I was just going to state, Mayor, to Matt's point, I can't remember if it's TSP or one of the other consultants, but somebody explicitly had in their proposal to come back to council for approval once we get to that point of establishing a cost estimate. And then the percentage we would negotiate with the consultant could then formally again be approved by the council, which is pretty much what Matt just, I believe, recommended as well. That's always an option we can do, initially approve this $15,000 and then come back to the council with the, the remaining Phase 2 contract, if you will, for negotiated cost, once we have a cost estimate on the construction.
Alright, Councilman Bueller?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I was a part of the group that reviewed all of the proposals. And I just want to say that the $15,000 on that Phase 1 would get us to some idea of what we want for design with our input, is the way I think this is supposed to shake out. And, and then what we're saying is, and I want to make sure I understand this, we're, we're looking at negotiating with them on a percentage or the amount of what the cost is going to be compared to the actual construction costs. So if they're going to be 6.5% or 7% or 8%, whatever that might be, I'm assuming that's what we're, we're going to do. And I think at that point, after Phase 1, and correct me if any of you think I'm wrong on this, after Phase 1, then we look at that and say, this is acceptable or it's not acceptable.
Right, that's, that's correct. And, and we, we won't get a good idea of the construction cost until we get through Phase 1. And then we'll be having a negotiation. I'm happy to bring that back to the council, whether or not you ask me to. Any other questions or comments? Let's see here. See none? I'm going to look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye and those, oh.
I guess I'm still not quite clear what is being approved, just for clarity's sake. I mean, are they, is the council intending to approve the mayor authority just for the $15,000? Or are, is the council intending to give the mayor the authority to enter into a comprehensive contract with TSP? Just for clarity's sake.
Okay, so the, the motion, as it's written in there, is just all necessary documents related to the renovation of the building and grounds. So that's more than just the $15,000. So if, if you want to keep it to the $15,000, need to amend the motion, I think. But I am happy to bring that back. To, Councilman Vilhauer?
I, I think I would feel comfortable if we were to bring it back another time, once we get past that initial phase. And we're talking about potentially some big taxpayer dollars here that I think it's only fair that we do it in the open, public setting.
Okay, Councilman Bueller?
Yeah, I, I agree with Glenn and I kind of, that's sort of what I took away from our meeting, that that was going to be the direction that we would go. You know, we could almost kind of leave an open checkbook for these folks beyond that Phase 1 part of the project. And if we're going to negotiate this, they need to know that there is a potential that we might look at going a different direction.
Yep, okay. Councilman Roby, you had your hand up for a sec, was that, did you want to add something?
Nope, I was going to repeat what Glenn and Bruce said.
Okay, so do I need to amend the motion? We got a motion by Vilhauer and a second by Lalum. And we can have it be for the $15,000?
I guess I would amend it, whether it's $15,000 or Phase 1, however we want to word it. But I would amend my motion to only include that.
You want Phase 1 or $15,000?
Well, do we know it's 15?
Let me just look at that.
Phase 1 cost of $15,000 would be my motion.
I would second that.
Okay, so let's vote on the amendment. Any other conver- Any other conversation on that? To amend the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Foyer?
Aye.
Holine?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Villahar?
Aye.
Y?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, so we have an amended motion. Now, is there any further discussion on, on that motion, which is limited? Well, then I'll look for action on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and those opposed signify by saying nay. Roll call vote, please.
Albertson?
Aye.
Bueller?
Aye.
Foyer?
Aye.
Holine?
Aye.
Lalum?
Aye.
Manti?
Aye.
Rademski?
Aye.
Roby?
Aye.
Villahar?
Aye.
Y?
Aye, sorry.
Okay. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Okay, if we are ready for old business, is there any old business? None. Is there any new business, Councilman Holine?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to kind of pony off of a little bit of the mask mandate and calling for civility and good conversation. I know everyone on the council has probably been contacted by individuals in the community accusing some of our staff of not being very helpful or, you know, perhaps being short. I just want to say to anyone out there in the community, if you're contacting our staff, just know, they're very, they work very hard. They're trying their best. Nobody working for the city of Watertown wants to give you a bad answer or wants to make you feel bad or wants to make your life more difficult. Just understand that. Show a little bit of respect and civility, and believe me, you will get respect and civility reciprocated back to you.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much, and it is very true. Oh, Councilman Albertson?
Thanks, Mayor. I had my hand up for old business, but maybe this is new business. Do we have anything to tell our community about an ice rink or ice rinks? Is there anything that, I continue to get asked about it, and of course, we've had some things happen that we're involved in, which is, it kind of puts the ice rink to sleep. And so, is there anything that we can tell people about that? Thank you.
Okay, we do have a committee that actually has been having conversations, and I will let Councilman Holine remark about that.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Albertson, thank you for the question. It's a question that I'm sure that all of us get intermittently, and you and I obviously get it asked quite often. We are continuing to meet. We actually have never stopped. We took a slight pause during the height of COVID when we were waiting to see where our numbers are. And we are still committed to at least exploring the possibility of ice. We can't guarantee anything, but I will just say that we continue to meet and discuss it. We have some possibilities that I think might be, might move the conversation forward in an exciting new way for the city of Watertown, but we're not ready to mention them publicly yet.
Thank you. I'm glad to have someone else answer that question. I get asked that a lot, and I appreciate that, Councilman Holine. Is there any other new business? All right, any liaison member reports? Councilman Villahar?
I've got two quick reports that both directly impact the city of Watertown. At its, at the utility board meeting last Monday, two actions that they took, or one action they took encompassed two things that we were relying upon. One is they approved the transfer amount for 2021 of approximately $1,573,000, which is about $175,000 more than 2020, so that's much appreciated. And secondly, this also relates to the Upper Big Sioux. They did approve a continuing contribution of $50,000 for funding for 2021, which is what they've been contributing the last several years. So, again, that's, that's appreciated because I think we saw, we saw Roger Foote's presentation here a couple of months ago. Will be put to good use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other liaison member reports? All right. Any announcements? I can say I'm gonna put a news release out here soon. You might have noticed there's some different art hanging in City Hall, so I'll be making an announcement about the artists that we're featuring now. And it should be nice for the public to come and see the art in City Hall, so be looking for that. And the, didn't we talk about that last time? No, we didn't. The zoo has achieved its accreditation, and so that's a big relief. There hasn't actually, haven't actually seen the letter, but they've been informed that they've met the requirements, so that's, that's a wonderful thing as well. Councilman Lalum?
All right, as we approach the holiday season here, I'd just like to, you know, ask our community to shop local as much as possible, you know, shop the small businesses, and be kind to our fellow citizens. That's all I got.
Thank you. Right, that's a good message. And we do not have a need to go into executive session, and there being no further business, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.